Please to, I'm sorry, uh, thank you, Councilor Clerk. This meeting is being recorded. Councilman Ferguson, could you please do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you and we give you the glory and the honor. We thank you for your mercies and your loving kindness. And Father God, we ask that you will be in the midst of this meeting. We ask for your peace and your wisdom and guidance. As we go through this budget tonight, Father God, we ask, um, and thank you for your constant protection. We ask that you bless the city and the participants of this meeting and all of this in the city in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Council Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Jones? Councilman Harry?
Here.
Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilwoman Giell?
Here.
Councilwoman Free?
Yeah.
Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
President Curtis?
Here.
We have six in attendance.
Okay. Thank you, Council Clerk. So I have a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Ferguson, any discussion? Okay, Council Clerk?
You see, Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, we both know.
Uh, the agenda.
The agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Free?
Yeah.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have seven, this is test.
Okay. All right, on the agenda, last time we left off with the executive budget, I will pull it up on my screen. Need to share. And I'll see, open this up so I can see everybody here. All right. To start with the executive budget. So. All right, any questions? Concerns, edits as relates to um, the executive budget?
Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, let's start with conference and training. That went from six thousand to four thousand. What were their receipts for this year?
Six thousand to ten thousand?
No, it was six thousand. They've added an additional four thousand, which would make it ten thousand, yes.
Okay.
How much have they spent already this year? That they require a four thousand dollar up, upkeep?
Uh, Mr. Stewart? Mr. Stewart, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Uh, so we are speaking about conference and training. So far, uh, up through May, we have spent, um, four thousand five hundred.
Okay, so what is it that the executive office feels like it would go anywhere past? You spend four thousand five hundred, uh, six thousand is what was appropriated, um, the last time, I mean, what, what do we, um, give us an idea of, of what, um, why you would need an additional four thousand dollars to make, take it to ten thousand? I see on here as a description, the Administrative Assistance Conference is that, that should be an administrative, uh, budget if it's for the administrative assistance. Administrative Professionals Conference that to me, anything for administrative, administration should be in the administrative, uh, budget.
I doubt I would agree with it, so I'll definitely do those adjustments.
I'm sorry, may I speak on that budget? Thank you.
Uh, one, one, one second, Mayor Cross.
Yes. So for administrative professional conferences, um, those, as you say, would be for the admin, um, assistants, and he is definitely a part of the admin department. So we would have to move those amounts to that department. But I
I'm sorry, I think first we need to find out, uh, these looks like, this looks like new entries to the, to the budget. I've never seen Administrative Professionals Conference on any of the budgets, so, um, we need to find out how much, what is the cost for a, uh, the administrative assistant or the administration, uh, being the executive assistant or uh, the city manager going to an administrative professional conference? Or the Administrative Assistance Conference, it looks like the, two the same thing.
For, for this, I would, I would, um, defer to the mayor. Maybe she could give us a more detail breakdown of what makes up this amount.
Okay, for this, and before I go to Mayor, Ms. Reed, does she have a point on this particular line item as well, added to it?
Well, I, I wanted to tell that, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
I wanted to point out that again, the budget that you're showing on your screen is different than the budget that is posted on the city website. And the materials that the council received as well. So what it shows for conference and training on that budget is fourteen thousand. You're showing ten thousand, within, on even for community advertising promotion. You're showing seventeen thousand, but it shows twenty-five thousand.
So was this, uh, was this updated?
The one that, uh, Councilwoman Reed is five twelve twenty-two, the one that for Reed is, uh, quoting, and then the other one that you're showing is six twenty-three twenty-two, which, um, I didn't think that we should be updating.
Yes.
All right, and just what's posted on the website right now, if you go to the meeting for June thirtieth in the agenda and the supporting period, that budget is different from what's shown on.
So, I would recommend that you go to the, um, the budget that is on the website. Where we could break down each of these. I know you're looking at it through the Excel, um, breakdown that I sent, you know, a little later, uh, but this is not the one you should be looking at.
Well, yeah, so this is a working document. We've, uh, all of the, the notes that I've made, this is the same budget that I pulled up last time.
And it was mine.
I'm sorry, last time, I also pointed out that it's wrong. If we're going over the budget, if we're, we should be starting from the budget that was presented to the citizens, which is that budget there, and then making the adjustments accordingly, um, that, which means we should be at fourteen thousand for that particular line item that Ms. Jones was commenting on. And then if it needs to be ten thousand, then we're discussing how we got to that ten thousand. If we're just, I mean, because even as a council member, I'm, I'm not sure how we got from one number to the next number. So I'm not sure when we go to vote, what I'm, I'm, what I'll be voting on. Should I be?
But it, it'll, the, when you, when you go to vote, everybody would get a revised budget, hopefully, the same document. Um, and so if there are any changes that, that need to be made, then we could add it here. But to go back to pull up another document that I don't even know where it is, um, cause I'm, the document online, I'm pretty sure it's PDF. This is the document that was provided from the treasurer's office for the budget. Um, now, if there's a version control, then, you know, you guys, uh, Mr. Day has, have to fix that. The, this budget is from the five twenty-five, um, we knew last time that there were some differences, um, in the, in the, what, well, this document, but we still proceeded. To scrap this all together would mean that we have to start all the way over from the beginning, uh, which we don't need to do because we've already gone through, you know, these, one, two, three, four, five, six budgets, and we've already agreed that as it stands on this document, that's what we're, you know, we haven't voted on it, but we're, we're past those now. So if there, if these diff, if these, uh, amounts are different, then, you know, we can, in this meeting, increase it if you guys want to or decrease it. But to scrap it, then we will have to start all, all, all over.
Well, I'm not suggesting it to be scrapped, I just want to know what budget we are working from and make sure that citizens are aware of what budget we're working from as well. I prepare in advance for these meetings and I review what's attached, so seeing, you know, completely different numbers now, I'm not sure why those changes were made. I don't know if they were errors that were corrected or if just the thinking that the administration had on these amounts has changed. I'm, I'm not, I don't feel informed on that right now.
It, can I, should jump in here right quick? I see, uh, Councilwoman Giell has her hand up, but I just wanted to say the paper budget that I'm looking at, uh, that I have is dated five twelve twenty-two, and it does show for count, for conferences and training fourteen thousand, uh, as the, uh, proposed budget. Uh, so those figure, the figures that you have up on the screen do not match what I have in my paper document.
Okay, so is there any reservation of just moving forward with, can everybody can see my document, correct?
Correct.
Any hesitation to just move ahead, if, if I, I know that it's different, it's not ideal. I get it. I understand where everyone is coming from. Um, I, I wouldn't even begin to tell you where the Excel file for the one that's on five twelve is. So if there, since we've already made, since you've already gone through the six, why don't we just go through this? If, you know, the mayor's here, she could, you know, say it, you know, av- advocate for it to go higher or lower based on, you know, whatever we talk about, and we just move forward. But I, I, I don't know, um, Ms. Giell?
Council President, since the treasurer is on the call and he's the one that, I, I, I believe he's the one that prepared these documents, is there any way that we can get the original five twelve, um, document emailed to us or emailed to you at least, so it can be on the screen? We can touch the other six that we touched on at a, you know, afterwards, but right now I don't feel comfortable with, and I, and I don't want to beat it to a pulp, but Councilwoman Farid, and I believe in Councilwoman Jones, like, we are, you know, bound by duty to operate off of a budget that has been publicized. And I get what you're saying about it, now, you know, it being in PDF version. But if the treasurer's on this call, and I'm sure, I hope, there's a non-PDF version of five twelve of what's been publicized to the public, we can operate off of, because what's going to happen right now is while we're going through each line item, I'm doing triple work, cause I'm looking at your screen, then I'm going into my other document where I took notes and checking to see if the numbers are the same, and it's a lot.
It's a lot different.
Okay.
Even, even if it's been the six, they were, um, in our legislation, some of the, the numbers were different. These numbers of five twelve are higher in a lot of cases.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, do you have this version that I'm looking at, but for five twelve?
I, what I have is a bridge, um, of the budget and the changes that we have made so far. I'm about to send that to you now, and it is carrying the budget that was published.
Okay. Send that to me now. I will look for it. Uh, Mr. Harry, I saw that you unmuted yourself. Did you have anything to say?
I'm good.
Okay.
Give me one minute, my computer is moving very slow.
Council President, if you want, I have it up on PDF, I can share.
Um, that, no, it's the Excel file that I'm looking for, so that we can make changes as we go. Now, let's see, I have to have the Excel version.
Uh, this is taking a while, sorry about this.
Uh, okay. So. I'll put this up, and I'll just put my Excel file on the other sheet. All right, this makes you a little bit dizzy. All right. Executive Office. Everybody see this? All right, one second, let me just move this. Over to my other screen, so I can have my own personal notes. And now we can move forward. All right. With that, we have fourteen thousand, shoot, just happened. Fourteen thousand, and I'll just, I think there were questions related to this, I'll just go to the mayor, Mayor Cross. Oh, now let's, uh, Ms. Ferguson, Ms. Free, did you have the same question or want to add to the question to this conference, to this, um, line item?
Yes, I just wanted to know if we knew how much of this fourteen thousand was actually related to the activities that we're seeing belonging administration. So in other words, if we move those over, how much will that leave of the fourteen thousand?
Okay. Mayor Cross?
Great, thank you. And just for the record, citizens, I have no idea why those numbers showed up before you this evening. They have not been discussed with me. The numbers that are before you right now, as Councilwoman Farid so eloquently brought out, are the numbers that was turned in to the treasurer. So I do not know where the treasurer pulled those numbers from, but I am apologizing for the wasted time this evening's call. Now, I will say that the Administrative Assistant is covering my Executive Assistant, Mr. Jordan McLong's training. Mr. Jordan McLong has not had training relative to any professions as it pertains to being an Executive Assistant, and as which it is important that I put into this budget an opportunity for him to have professional, uh, training. So the professional administrative training outside of its name, num, the naming convention actually does cover everyone that serves in an administrative capacity, which my Executive Assistant does. Uh, so with that, we are talking about Mr. McLong. So the Administrative Professionals, um, Conference is actually twenty-one eighty-five to attend this conference. And that couples with his per deal. Uh, Mr. McLong has not attended an opportunity for MML. So built into this conference and training is also an opportunity for him to attend MML. Uh, the cost for the administrative training that he needs to, uh, take up this coming year, uh, the cost can range from a thousand to three thousand dollars to make him, uh, ready to serve in this office. So while he is a very efficient in getting things done that we ask, there are things that, um, administrative, a professional does that he needs to be trained on. And that's part of building his peer rapport as well. Uh, so I've built that into the executive budget for conferences and training to ensure that he gets the opportunity to do that. So from the forty-five hundred, do keep in mind that the International Association uh, for Administrative Professionals is built into that, that is a summit, and also built into that is his attended in, in MML. Uh, the World Association of Mayors, we did not get a chance to go to. So that is built into this budget because it traditionally will happen around June the second.
Ms. Jones, answer your question.
That answers my question, but I'm sorry, that answers my question, but still, I believe that anything administrative, this, that he's the Administrative Assistant, it shouldn't be under the executive office, because the executive office is just for the mayor. It, it, all this should be under, you know, I mean, somebody can, um, check me if I'm wrong, but I think it should be under the administrative, uh, administrative budget as to, he, he works in the administrative office. And looking at, if it's only forty-five hundred dollars and they've only spent forty-five hundred dollars, which is only nine thousand dollars, I think I would not take this down to, um, ten thousand dollars just to see what it is they've spent. No, I'm sorry. The six thousand, I'm, I'm sorry, please forgive me. The six thousand that's in there for the events for the mayor, uh, the, the conferences and training should stay six thousand. That other four thousand dollars, forty-five hundred dollars for Mr., uh, if that's what she's saying, it's for Mr., um, uh, George, is, if it's for Jordan McClung, then that, that forty-five hundred dollars needs to go to the, uh, administrative budget, and it needs to be ided as, that, that is what it's for, for him to go to those, uh, that training.
Hmm, if I may, Council President?
Uh, sure.
So you do know that there is an actual billet in the City of Glen Arden, which is the Administrative Assistant. That was, uh, Ms. Michelle Cheek's position, and that position is still relevant. So in the administrative budget, I do recommend that they put a position Administrative Assistant in it. But keep in mind that Executive Assistant, Jordan McLong, works for the mayor. And he supports the city manager. So he works at the executive staff level. Not that he would be doing paperwork for anyone else within the city. So the Administrative Assistant is actually Michelle Cheek. But she too should be attending these conferences. So I would recommend forty-five hundred be put in the administrative budget so that whomever sits in that Administrative Assistant, which is not Mr. McLong, he is an Executive Assistant, will have the necessary training as well to support. And that means telephone calling and being able to be responsive to our citizens when they call in with complaints or otherwise, as well as doing paperwork relative to, um, making filings and keeping our permanent records, uh, accordingly. And that's permanent records for everyone in the city. So the Administrative Assistant works across the city. The Executive Assistant is held by the executive team.
The Executive Assistant was always the, uh, support for the city manager and for the mayor. Uh, and since, and this, in our case, in this city, the mayor is a part-time mayor, so most of his work should be involved with the, um, was always the, the, uh, I'm not gonna say him, I'm just saying, the Executive Assistant's work was always mostly geared towards helping the, uh, city manager, doing grants. They knew how to do grants, they knew how to do all of the necessary things to support the city manager. And the small things that they did for the part-time mayor, it, uh, it, it would just, it wasn't enough, it, for him to work for the, just be an executive for the mayor. Uh, the mayor is not in the office eight hours. It's a part-time, uh, mayor, so, um, he would have to, something else would have to be given to him to do, which is, uh, support the city manager and all of the endeavors that she has been charged with. So once again, uh, yes, the administrative budget does show conferences and training, which would be for the Administrative Assistant. If you want to put additional funds in, the forty-five hundred dollar funds in for, uh, the Executive Assistant, whoever it is, then I think it should go under the administration's budget. Because when he gets ready to go to these conferences, the, uh, city manager would have to know, be, be made aware of that he's out of the office.
Hmm, and, and that's
Councilman Ferguson, uh, Mayor Cross, one second, uh, uh, Councilman Ferguson.
Okay, I concur with, um, Councilwoman Jones, um, I, that, um, training should go under administration. Actually, um, in the executive budget, there's only one salary there, and that would be the salary of the mayor. Uh, in administration, there is, um, Executive Assistant, which is the salary of Jordan's, and it's also a administration, administrative assistant salary, both of them being active. Um, so both of those are in, among the other, um, salaries, city manager, HR, executive, uh, executive assistant, administrative web, webmaster, bus driver, all of those are under admin, admin, administration. There's only one salary, um, under executive, and that is the mayor. And so I, um, definitely believe that all of this needs to go under admin where, um, Mr. Uh, Jordan is being paid, paid, um, under. So, um, that, that should be, be removed because he's not even on her budget, in her budget.
What's this, uh, or, um, edits as relates to this, um, line item? How much was, uh, Mayor Cross, how much was that relating to Mr. Jordan?
Forty-five.
I'm sorry, what you saying, Ms. Ferguson?
I, I know one was, uh, twenty-one eighty-five, and I, I think
You, you unmute.
It was, um, I, I just got twenty-one eighty-five. I didn't get the full, I think she said four thousand and some odd dollars, but I didn't get the full amount. I think she'd be happy with that.
Mayor Cross, we'll see the other one, twenty-one eighty-five, what's the other, uh, amount?
So it can go up to fifty-two hundred, uh, because there's three thousand for administrative training courses uh, that can be put into his, um, budget line as well. So, um, twenty-one eighty-five is for the attendance of the conference, uh, and also for his attendance to MML. So if you add thirty thousand to twenty-one eighty-five, that's fifty-one eighty-five. So you can add another, um, thousand and round it up, right? So then that's at least, uh, sixty-two hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, what's the extra thousand dollars for?
For MML. For MML.
Okay, so you said twenty-one eighty-five.
Hmm.
And then you said, uh, and that's for the administrative conference. Then you said a thousand for MML.
Three thousand for training.
And three thousand for training, sixty-one eighty-five.
Correct. And so you have to put in per diem for each one of those training that he goes to. Everybody gets per diem when they go out for training.
I, I understand that.
So my recommendation is sixty-one eighty-five. If you make it sixty-two, then that should cover his per diem as well.
Fifteen dollars for the per diem?
Well, you're adding in the thousand. So uh, the three thousand is covering the courses that he can go to. So we are adding, we're just making it a round number. But if you want to do sixty-one eighty-five, sixty-one eighty-five. I like to deal in round numbers.
Okay, uh, no, I, that, that wasn't my point. My point was you came up to sixty-one eighty-five, which I understand how you got up to sixty-one eighty-five. And then I understood to say that, that did not include the per diem. And so that if we want to include the per diem, then we rounded up to sixty-two hundred dollars.
No, that includes per diem, that includes per diem, but I like to deal in round numbers. So, but if you want to put sixty-one eighty-five, then your number will be sixty-one eighty-five.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones and then Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you, sir. Uh, under the statement of revenues and expenditures uh for the City of Glen Arden from May first, twenty-twenty-two through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, under conference and training for the administration, it's showing that they only spent seventeen ninety-nine, which would be eighteen hundred dollars. And that was possibly for one person. So now that we're adding two, I would say two thousand for that person and then two thousand for this, for Jordan to go to whatever, that's four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I would put five thousand dollars in that budget line item for conference and training and administration for those two persons.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gill.
I have to agree with what Councilwoman Jones stated and I, I have to be honest that it's somewhat, I don't want to say difficult, but I, I'm, we're looking at conference and training for, I thought, for the executive, meaning the mayor, and then now we're putting aside stuff for the admin and which may very well change, like we're saying sixty-two hundred and I, I just don't want us to tie ourselves up to the sixty-two hundred because I personally think that that's too high of a number. Um, we ourselves, as legislators, don't get that much money to attend a lot of these trainings. And it's a recession, inflation that's about to take place. So I understand that there are a lot of opportunities that may come, but I also think that we need to be piecemeal when it comes to which opportunities will be best for us to take advantage of. I, I would not go the six, I would not go over five thousand. I, I think four thousand is reasonable, but I um will leave it for everyone else to vote upon it when it's time.
Okay. Anyone opposed to uh certainly uh assist, executive assistant or administrative assistant um conference and training at five thousand, moving it to the administrative budget? Anybody opposed to that? Ms. Uh, Ferguson, Mayor, I'm gonna make Ferguson.
Now, the, the five thousand, um, is that saying that that's just for the executive or is the five thousand two hundred and fifty, uh, uh, twenty-five hundred between the administrative assistant and executive assistant?
It's for both, so twenty-five hundred for the administrative assistant, twenty-five hundred for the executive assistant.
Okay, yeah.
To send trading. So, Mr. Stewart, are you still there?
There's some online.
That's why I'm still here.
Okay, could you uh take hmm five thousand dollars of this fourteen thousand dollars and move it to the administrative budget in conference and training for the executive assistant and the uh administrative assistant, please? Mr. Stewart? Okay, so that'll put her budget now at nine thousand dollars. Any other questions on this line item before we go to the next?
And the uh wording, I guess, uh, needs to come out where the administrative professionals, that, that, uh, that training just need to come out of that budget, uh, detail.
Okay.
Right.
Mr. Stewart, you're adding that to ten-ten seventy-six fifty?
Okay. All right, so we're at nine thousand dollars for this line item. And um, are these new hands?
No, yeah, mine is a new hand.
Mine is well.
Okay. All right, Mr. Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, once again, looking at the updated uh, uh, what has been expended from uh May second to May thirty-first, uh, in the conference and in the training, only forty-five hundred dollars has been spent. I think they should stay at six thousand.
Okay.
And then.
Thank you. Ms. Gill. Councilwoman Gill.
So it, it's a question, I know the mayor had ran off a lot of things um in a few minutes ago, but off of the response that the treasurer gave to Ms. Jones, about forty-five hundred per his records has been spent. I'm trying to understand the doubling of that amount to nine thousand. An explanation behind the doubling of that amount.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so during the year twenty-twenty-two, um, only the mayor actually had gone to any form of training and conferences, uh, Mr. Um, not came, did not go to any. So we're preparing for him to go to some training next year.
So when we're, so when we were talking about the forty-five hundred, that forty-five hundred pertain to the expenses from the executive office from the mayor attending the conference and trainings, correct, Mr. Stewart, or am I hearing something else?
Yes, that's, that's exactly.
Okay, so to, so, so to that end, if we're only looking at this line item and I'm, may, maybe I have it wrong, but now we're saying that this line item is going to be nine thousand dollars because we removed um five thousand from the proposed number here. So Mister, so the assistants will have their own conference and training numbers. So if we do that now, I, I believe Council President said it's now nine thousand. So if the mayor, if this is only for the mayor and she spent forty-five hundred, I'm trying to understand why are we doubling that amount for twenty-twenty-three to make it nine thousand, although prior year showed six K. But if spending was forty-five hundred, then why are we saying the spending is going to be up to nine thousand?
For that, I would defer to the mayor again because she has the breakdown as to how she came up to that fourteen thousand dollars. If we take off five thousand uh for the additional person that's in her, that was in her department, I can't see why it should be five thousand dollars, but she take over to tell us what's going on.
Okay. Council President, that's it for me.
Council President, are you ready for me to respond?
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, sorry, Mayor Cross.
Thank you. And it may be easier for these questions to defer to the mayor to start and then the treasurer for the financial rollout, uh, as this is my proposed budget. That would make it easier, I think, for everyone. So the mayor did not attend MML summer. As you recall, we had a delayed election period, which prevented me from knowing or anyone from knowing who the mayor was going to be last summer. So traditionally, there is a summer MML and then there's a fall in the mail. There's a summer MACO and then there's a fall MACO. MACO is the Maryland Association of Counties. Now, what we learn in there is exceptional opportunities and building those relationships across this county, which benefits when it comes down to grants and other funding for our city. So when the mayor goes out to these events or conferences, it's about building the relationships and when funding is available. So the other thing that we did not attend was the World Association of Mayors. Uh, that was built into the budget before the World Association of Mayors happens in June. Uh, again, same circumstance because of the delayed election period, we didn't know uh if there, who was going, so no one attended last June. So those are three um conferences that mayor would usually go out to. And those three conferences, if you add them at um, as a minimum, you know, seventeen plus per diem would cover the rest of the amount, which is forty-five hundred difference from what's already, already spent.
So, uh, what's one point of clarification, uh, Mayor, that uh, you did go to summer MML. Um, but I agree that those numbers aren't in the May uh numbers, uh, because June uh last year was another fiscal year. So in this fiscal year, um, there was opportunity uh to go, I would, actually, I know that you went to winter and summer. Um, I'm pretty sure you didn't go to the um the, I don't know, the other conference you were talking about, but I just want that point of clarification that this is, uh, this year, you did attend the winter, you did attend the uh summer. Uh, but we do have to wait for those numbers for June because that did happen in June. Um, is there a reason why you did not go to the other conference that you're now wanting to go to next year?
It all happened in June. So the mayor was, the, the election didn't happen until the end of July. So any conferences of June of twenty-twenty-one are not accounted in that budget that the treasurer just gave when they should have been, but they would not. So the World Association of Count, uh, Mayors is in June. Uh, as you stated, MML summer is in June. Uh, so I went this June, but that's technically the next year of MML. So it's not, um, while it is accounted for in that budget, it pushes to the next year's fiscal budget for the municipality.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Ms. Councilwoman Jones.
I still two things. She, she uh mentioned uh that uh she said seventeen hundred dollars per conference. Let's say two thousand and take it up to four, that's still six thousand dollars. It's not nine thousand. Um, also, a question I wanted to ask about, when we move this money over to the administrative uh line item for conferences and training, they already have a um, uh, uh four thousand for their budget and we put in forty-five, another forty-five hundred, that'll be eight thousand. So uh, how are we going to correct that? Because I'm sure they don't need, uh, is, we've just determined that it, for both persons, it will be five thousand. So um uh, Mr. Stewart or uh Council President, that four thousand that's already in the line item for conferences and training in the administrative budget, uh, we just going to add a thousand dollars to that and make it five thousand? Or we uh adding the five thousand to this four thousand?
No, it should just be five thousand.
It should be just five thousand. Okay, I just want to make sure that that um money wasn't uh hiked up.
No.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ferguson?
No, I'm, I'm looking at this here and it says, um, in their training, the conferences are training, it says MML conference, MML legislation meeting for city ma- uh, city manager.
Oh.
And it had, and then it says professional development training for support staff um and the uh mileage. So they did have a little in there, but uh we need to, I would say either if we didn't want to add the whole five thousand, I would not, I mean, because you still have the, that includes the city manager's training as well.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I wanted to just make a general co- a general uh comment about the uh training for the mayor. Um, and this is just general, in my, uh, my opinion, especially with recession and everything, just because um they offer these conferences, I mean that you have to attend every, that's one of them. And because we have to be mindful of the taxpayers' money as well. I mean, they have to, some, some of these things, you have online or you have local um training, where you can go right to Rockville or Baltimore. So we just need to be mindful of, of, of you know, a lot of conferencing, um, when it's not necessary. Because they offer them every year and, and you can attend.
Thank you. All right, um, Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you. Uh, my question is similar to Council, um, Vice President Ferguson's. I just wanted to know, Mayor, is it necessary to attend both the winter and the summer versions? I believe like for MML, I think they offer the same offerings in both the summer and the fall. Um, and I'm not sure if that's the same thing with the MACO conference, but is it possible to attend one of each?
Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. So there are different classes and as of present, we're attending the uh municipal academy, the academy classes. So particularly for this fall, there is one course that I know hasn't, wasn't offered this summer and it won't be offered in the next summer. It's only offered during the winter session. So I will have winter session in this fiscal year twenty-three, but then we won't have it in fiscal year twenty-four, uh, because we will complete the academy training in the next summer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, um, any other questions? We'll move on to the next line item.
So what's going in this line item?
Yeah. Um. Whatever the council wishes to go on this line item.
Okay, so we need to take a consensus from the council. Uh, I, I, I mean, I, like I said, I think it should stay at six, maybe seven, but um uh, other council members have an idea. I, I don't think it should be nine thousand.
I would say that the uh council has a five thousand dollar um budget per council members, thirty-five thousand dollars uh in the conference and training line for the council. Uh, so that puts us at five thousand dollars each. Um, and we are tasked with spinning that wisely, picking, you know, which one best uh puts us in a position to um bring value to the city. Um, and then we go from there. We manage our own, you know, conference budgets accordingly. All right, um, I guess, okay, consensus to keep it at six thousand dollars, um, which is a thousand dollars more than the council, which is fine. Um, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Fareed?
No.
Uh, Mr. Harry?
Whatever the council wants to do.
Okay. Mr. Hairston?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
And I will say, uh, yes as well. Um, uh, Ms. Fareed, was there another idea that you had that you did not share?
Well, in keeping in mind what, what the mayor just responded about the um as the certification or the, the fact that she will need to go, I was thinking that it would be two additional and at um roughly two thousand apiece, that would actually take it up to ten thousand, so bringing it to nine thousand, I thought would be reasonable.
Okay.
Because I mean, otherwise, basically, the money that's been invested thus far in getting that certification would have been wasted if it's not completed.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, so the consensus wants to keep it at six and we can move on to any, the next line item. So I figure we're just going to go line up by line item, membership dues. Um, and, and Mayor Cross, actually, I'll just go to you uh, uh, on some occasions. Uh, I see that this line item has to increase from eleven-hundred-six thousand. Um, and it just says miscellaneous dues expenditures. Do you want to explain that?
Sure. So inside of that were the dues for also the executive assistant. Um, so I will tell you that several. Um, so I will tell you that several of our, like Maryland Black Mayors has increased their dues to a hundred dollars. Um, so if you look at the conference line and training, each one of those comes with a set of dues. So I put that in there as far as, um, it pertains to these conferences and training. Uh, if there are miscellaneous expenses, so this is an election year, we don't know what the additional requirements will be. Uh, with a new governor coming on board, uh, they may assemble the mayors for a feedback session. I put some, some money in there for the city to be represented at that executive level. I, I, I've never been mayor before, so I, I don't know what a new governor requires. But this is an election year, which we will have a new governor. We will keep the same senator. We will keep pretty much the same county council member. But inside of that, uh, we do potentially have delegates that will come on board. So this is a year that we're gonna have to get to know our legislative staff. And many of which would be your mayor going out to make sure that the city's voice is at the table. Uh, this is also a year where the county, uh, is doing some extensive development around our city. So built into that is also expenditures to make sure that we're at planning boards and sessions as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Cross. Um, Ms. Ms. Jones.
I'm sorry, but the things that you're speaking of, Mayor Cross, are usually free events when the mayor, when the governor invites you somewhere, they don't charge you to come. You know, to those events. So this isn't talking about, this is talking about dues and expenditures. And only, uh, when you look at, once again, the, what has been spent so far till, till, uh, May thirty-first is only five hundred and sixty dollars. So do you have any documentation of these other dues that are, uh, coming in, uh, uh, any bills? Um, uh. Any invoices that they've sent, that they've said that this, it's gonna be this, or are you gonna have to pay for that?
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. So I have made a projection, uh, based on this being an election year. Um, it's currently at eleven. I do not believe eleven will be enough. Um, if I may make a request to cut that in half and just go with three thousand, we still have to cover per diem. Um, so if I have to drive to Annapolis, we do not have a company car, so I would have to use my own vehicle. So I just put that in there for, I know we have a new staff of folks coming. It won't be, um, you know, Governor Hogan. So we need to have the city represented at that executive staff and those legislative level.
This is, this line item is for membership and dues. It is not for, for travel or any, any other expenses, uh, those types of expenses. I think that if, if you can use your discretionary fund, mate, I gotta go back and look at that resolution again and see if that's in there for travel. But general expenses or, um. I, I've never, I've never known the city pay for per diem to go to, uh, Annapolis. Uh, to a meeting. I, I've been to plenty of, uh, meetings in Annapolis, uh, coming on as a council person and if. P, uh, uh, PGCA may didn't supply the transportation, which I still didn't have to pay for. I, I drove my own personal vehicle and I was not reimbursed for any of that.
We'll also have a new board of education. So consider that it, bigger than even that. We're, we have to build a relationship in this election year.
But those things have nothing to do with the city of Glen Arden. I mean, I understand the board of education as a parent, as a citizen, I can go down to the board of education and, and talk and do what I want. But it's not gonna cost me any money to do these things. It's not gonna cost the city money for you to go and meet. Uh, whoever the, who's ever on the board or whoever the new governor is.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones. Uh, Ms. Fareed.
Um, I agree. I think when we are engaging in. Community building, whether it be with other elected officials or just the citizens that we don't. I mean, I have not ever, um, submitted reimbursement for that or saw it any per diem. Um, for that activity. So I think that needs to come out. And I also think that we need to figure out. Who is going to be involved in what activities? I certainly think that the mayor should be involved in anything that's. Um, related to other executive offices, but as it relates to, um, liaison with other legislatures. I, I think that would be the responsibility of the legislative, um, branch of our government.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Mayor Cross.
I thank you, Council President. I just wanted to give an example. So for like the conference to attend the teachers' conference, there will be one this weekend. Um, to attend that teachers' conference can be a thousand dollars. So that is an interface area where your city shows, because we have two elementary schools here. One is a tag school and the other one being public elementary, uh, school. It is important that we increase our visibility and support of education. So I highlight just for that, attending that teachers' conference is a thousand dollars. But that's not something that I put in conferences and training. Uh, that's why I put it in miscellaneous expenses. So it should be miscellaneous dues and expenses.
Okay, uh, I go Councilwoman Jones first, then I'll have comment. Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, sir. But with a teachers' conference, specifically, how does that, what does that, how is that? Uh, have anything to do with the city of Glen Arden, per se, the mayor and legislative branch of, of the city? You're saying it's a teachers' conference. We have no information on, uh, the specifics of what it is that there. Had, this may be a conference for teachers, not necessarily for, um, the mayor to show up or the city council to show up and. Say anything or do anything. It may be specifically tailored to teachers. So why would the city want to spend a thousand dollars for a conference that, uh, really has, that there, we have no. Jurisdiction in or no say in. I think that, um. I think, like I said, uh, for membership and dues, that line item is only spent five hundred and sixty dollars. If anything, uh. I would make it two thousand and, and leave it at that because, and then when we get the receipts or invoices from the different organizations that are, uh. That, uh, are, the, the mayor is trying to, uh, join with, they can send us the invoices and then we can determine. Whether this is something that's gonna, uh, uh, have, uh. Anything to do with the city, uh. It, how it would impact the city in any, how would it impact the city in any way? Because we had, as, 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 even though we have two elementary schools in our, in the city of Glen Arden. Well, three really, because Ardmore Elementary is considered part of Glen Arden. At the board of education determines what happens at those schools. The executive, uh, uh. Whoever the head of the board of education is, uh, Ms. Golson, they determine what goes on with the board of education. The Prince George County Government, the county exec determines what goes on at those schools and what's gonna happen. Yes, we have input as, uh, citizens, but it's not to the great import, uh, to the point where we have to spend a thousand dollars for a conference. For, for teachers, that we're gonna make any kind of great impact.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. I, I will ask, um. Couple things, uh, I mean, is there an already established itinerary for this teachers' conference? That pertains to some type of, um. Executive level. I don't know. Classes or something, or is it just geared to teachers? Mayor Cross.
So there are, there aren't classes, but there is, you know, representation. And I can pull an agenda for you and make that available to the council. But I'm okay with where Councilwoman Jones was. If we wanna just bring it up another thousand, um. Then I'm okay with that at two thousand.
Uh, and, and the other question is. What new memberships that you are not a part of now that you're looking to join? To raise it to two thousand.
Yes, for one is the National League of Cities there.
That's not in, you're not, uh, are you a member now?
No.
How much is that membership?
Point of order. I thought the previous mayor was part of National League of Cities. And, and, and the council is also part of the members of National League of Cities.
I haven't turned in a bill for them. I haven't turned in a bill for them. The member rate is seven hundred and fifty dollars, sir.
Okay. Any other memberships?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Ms., uh, Ferguson.
Are you planning on, um, attending any of the conferences?
It would be, um, acceptable to the council, then yes.
I mean, I'm just wondering, I mean, if, why, um. Are you just getting the membership just to have them or are you planning on anticipating?
Well, Councilwoman Ferguson, you know me, if I'm gonna have a membership, we gonna make it work for the city. Um, so we would definitely participate in any conferences. Um, so for that, the member rate is at seven fifty. Uh, they do have a conference, particularly with this National League. Um, and that could run an additional twelve hundred plus per diem. So I.
No, well, I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, I mean, if you're not attending. I mean, you're just spending money just to have a membership, but you're not participating in anything, that's just a waste. And then, of course, you're, you're, you're. You're adding on, uh, um, teachers' conference, uh, and, and different things such as that, um. Again, there are a lot of conferences, um, and trainings all over, but you just can't take everything in one year. I do understand, uh, M M L, um. Uh, getting your, uh, sort of, and getting, um, completing the classes. It took about two years for, for us to, to go through the graduation. That's something different, but, um. I, you know, I, I definitely, um. Ms. Jones said two thousand, I was gonna say fifteen, fifteen hundred, because I know you did say that the executive, um. Dues was in, it was included in that, and of course, that would need to be taken out because the executive, uh, assistant is not under your budget. And as far as the membership and dues, um. Just adding, um, that's what it is. It's not about adding in extra money. Just in case there's a conference or per diem and, and mileage, that's, that's not what it's for. You can't just add. Um. Anything under these categories, because they, that, these, um, uh, accounting codes are specific in what they cover. These, you know, training is training. You can't say you, that education or, uh, teachers' training and membership and dues. When it goes under a seven, uh, seventy-six fifty, ten seventy-six fifty. So, um, again. Two thousand would be the highest, but I would say fifteen hundred.
Okay. All right. Let's start the.
Yes, I mean, that was just, and, and it's essential that we understand that the category is membership and dues. Not training, not conferences. Thank you.
All right, and that was fifteen hundred for membership dues. And I think you got the six thousand for conference and training. Um, any other questions on professional services? Any, I'm sorry, moving on. Any questions on professional services? Sorry.
Council President, I thought we were going to, are we going to decide or land on the final number for membership and dues? I know we heard two thousand, we heard fifteen hundred. Not sure what we're going with, just for clarity.
So in order to avoid doing consensus on every line, I'll just say anyone opposed to fifteen hundred. Not hearing any, then we'll move, we'll, we'll move on at the fifteen hundred. And hopefully they'll save some time, so we don't have to go through it with every, uh, uh, consensus for every line item. Um, if you disagree, please feel free to, you know, unmute your, your mic, council members. Mute your mic and let me know. Um. Okay. All right. Professional services is at twenty-five hundred. Um. All these things open. Some. One second. I thought I had, saw email from you, Mr. Stewart about, um, oh, here it is, I see it, I see it. Okay. You might have the number. One second, Mayor Cross. You might have that number handy as we are, where we are with, uh, this for, um, May thirty-first through May thirty-first.
I have it for professional services.
Yes.
They haven't spent anything.
Okay.
Still, it's at twenty-five hundred.
Mayor Cross, um, do you care to speak on this particular line item?
Um, and I do need to ask a point of, uh, clarification just for me.
Hmm. You're, I'm sorry, uh, somehow you became muted again. I can't hear you.
Sorry, are we taking National League of Cities out of membership and dues? Cause it was seven fifty alone. So if you give me fifteen hundred, then that doesn't pay for the rest of my dues for the year. Because we have eleven hundred that was spent in twenty-one.
The five hundred was spent.
And only five hundred with sixty was spent this year.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, it was for. I see what you're saying now, but that, that was the approved budget, but I do see that in nineteen and twenty that it was a thousand dollars. But I don't know whether that includes National League of Cities for, um, for the previous mayor or not.
And, and, and keep in mind, we did not go to World Association of Mayors. We did not go to M M L Summer. So in this fiscal year coming, um, we have to account for those, um, in there. Else I have to take those out of that line item because there won't be enough money with the increase. Maryland Black Mayors alone is. Hundred up the increase. So, um, I won't be able to attend those.
Well, Mayor Cross, I think it'll be helpful. I think the, the council's at a disadvantage because there, there's not really a, a lot of support here. I think it'll be helpful if you wrote down, you know, what you want to be a member of and the costs associated with all of them. That would get us to a, uh, uh, you know, accurate number of where you want to be. Um, right now, we just have, yeah, we started from six thousand dollars that doesn't have that much detail of. Line item, okay, six thousand dollars, five hundred for M M L membership, seven fifty for National League Cities. And whatever else that you want to be a member of, yeah. Um, but it'd be helpful if you could get that to us, uh, and then we can come back to that. Mayor Cross.
Okay, so the treasurer does have those numbers, because those that had attended, uh, the National League of Cities, the reason why. Broke that one out specifically is because of its cost. I did not attend that, nor did we have paid for it last year. But the National League of Cities, like I said, is at seven fifty. And that's the only reason why I've, I've asked the question. So if we do fifteen hundred plus seven fifty, I think I'll be good, Council President.
No, because you've only spent.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, Ms. Jones, uh, Ms. Ferguson had her hand up first.
Mayor, you're saying, um, that you didn't tend to the conferences. Um, now that, when you say seven fifty and five hundred, are you talking about, are those, those are memberships, right? So when you go and you said, um, you spoke about going to the summer M M L and, uh, um. Fall M M L, the, um. The memberships are annual. You don't, you pay two, at two memberships for, for each conference. So, um, i- if, if, um, hypothetically, if M M L is five hundred dollars. Is, is for both, it covers all of that. You don't, it's not per conference. So, um, that's not a thousand dollars for membership, because you only pay one annual. And I'm not sure that is that much, because, um, I don't think our bill was that much for seven of us. Now, we do need to get the figures, because I don't believe that we.
No.
We paid five hundred dollars for seven, um, for membership for five, uh, seven people. I, I don't remember signing the check for that.
Yeah. So again, Mayor Cross, if you can, you know, get these figures, uh, certainly don't want to stop you from being a part of, uh, organization that can help the city. It's just that we don't, we just have a number. We don't really have anything tied to the overall. It's just that we don't, we just have a number, we don't really have anything tied to the overall figure. So, if you get that back to us, that'll be helpful, and that will enable us to make an informed decision on how we set that line item. All right. But as regards professional services, what professional services? Are you looking for, Ms. Mayacross?
So, professional services has been a line that's been in our budget for the executive line from, it was approved in FY twenty-one, and I believe the professional services was to assess, you know, our planning, to help us actually do a corporate strategic plan, which we do not have for the city. So, the assistance would be what that budget line would be for, to build a corporate strategic plan for the city. And that includes infrastructure, buildup for our city, and the like.
Any questions from council on this line item? Okay. Seeing none. Moving on to. I guess community advancement, promotion, outreach went from twelve hundred dollars in twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty-three. Mayacross, if you want to explain the twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollar increase before I open up for questions?
Yes, thank you, Council President, but first, I submitted with this an actual breakout as an Excel. Did the council get that along with the budget?
Can't say that.
Treasurer, did you submit that as requested? Because it gives a month-by-month breakout, as well as the organization of activities by the month. I requested that be submitted with the budget when it prepared to go to the council. Treasurer?
The only thing I have is that it has a breakdown, is the special events, where you have.
Did you submit it to the council?
For special events, I do not have that.
I submitted it with my budget proposal, it was an Excel, and it came with the spreadsheet that you asked me to fill out by the month. The second tab was listed as annual twenty-two, twenty-three community.
Well, Madam, if you, if you want to share your screen to show the breakout, I'll stop sharing. And give council members to see that breakout before they ask their questions.
See. How about it? Do you see it, Council President?
It was about to pop up, and it did not pop up, or, yeah, so, yes, so if you just move this, your, the, oh, well, maybe that's just me, sorry, I see it, does everybody else see it? Okay, yep, sorry, that was me, go ahead.
So, this spreadsheet accommodates twenty-seven community building events per year. It includes the STEM program, includes senior and youth outreach opportunities, as well as mental health and wellness program. It also includes community unity programs, and a uptick, if you will, of our community involvement, which will include farmer's market, parade, and the reinvigoration of the Walk for Cancer, and bikeathons in our city, which will be utilizing the Glen Arden Parkway, as we've done in the past. It also includes programs for safety awareness, and it includes a mayoral scholarship program, that's five thousand dollars to go to a Glen Arden high school graduate. And it can actually go through two high school graduates, to ensure that the city imparts in the development of education of our young folks. All the events I put were pending COVID-nineteen closures as well, if I scroll down. You'll get a chance to see. So, starting with January?
I think, I think we're good. I'll open it up.
Stop sharing.
Well, you could keep it up there if you want to. Or, you can stop, if council members want you to put it back up, then you can.
Okay.
With that, I'll move to Councilwoman Fareed.
Thank you, I think the line item that we're on, though, is not special events, it's actually the promotional items. That's because the promotional items is the twenty-five thousand, and then special events is twenty-eight thousand. And on the point about special events, the budget actually says it's for twenty-four community building events, and your spreadsheet shows for twenty-seven events. And it's a different.
So, submitted was twenty-seven, but as we've seen in this budget that was sent to you, several things seem to have changed. So, but the original submission was twenty-seven, and you have twenty-four. And I'm okay with that.
So, you're saying the twenty-eight thousand represents the twenty-seven events, not twenty-four events?
Correct.
Okay, but going back to the, ten fifty, ten seven five ten, community advertisement, promotion, outreach, promotional pen, pencils, pens, teasers, et cetera, that's gone from twelve hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Great, yes ma'am, so on that line item there, thank you, Council President, what I've noticed when I go to Maryland Municipal League, or when I go to Mako, many of the cities have promotional city items. We, Glen Arden, I don't know if we've ever done it. Now, I do remember hearing from Councilwoman Eason, when she was on board, her and Councilwoman Wilson actually put together our city out town, which was a billboard and an actual presentation about the city of Glen Arden. The city of Glen Arden has a rich history that no one else in this county really can tell outside of us. And we really don't have anything that accentuates what makes Glen Arden unique in Prince George's County, relative to the other cities that I've seen, just even in this Mako or this MML Summer. And I know Council, City Manager Barber was there with me as we went to the various vendors, and you had District Heights, and you had other cities representing their story. But Glen Arden doesn't have a backdrop even, that helps people understand what makes us unique. So, that's why I put that in there, to build our story. So, when these conferences happen, date agnostic, we'll make it to where we can use it more than once, we can tell Glen Arden's story, the strong history of the city.
Okay, so is it fair to say that this is not exactly promotional items in the sense of like giveaways, but this is more like an investment in a, as you called it, Glen Arden outside of the city presentation? So, this should only be a one-time cost, or at least not a cost that's in the budget every year?
Well, sometimes you need to have the giveaway, so what we will do is make sure the most effective price. But many cities had pencils, they had baseballs, you know, consider Glen Arden, what makes us special? We can find a trinket that people take with them from this conference. Paper airplanes, you know, the foam airplanes that fly are something. Glen Arden is a legacy city in Prince George's County. Right now, we don't have anything that tells that story. And that would be something that would be wonderful for our council presidents, our city manager, for the council members, for the mayor, when we go to these conferences, to work our booth, to have someone there to see our face, to hear our story. So, that does include Councilwoman Fareed, some type of trinket. That's why I put pencils, pens, you know, even T-shirt with city on the move, you know, something that accentuates Glen Arden, we don't have that.
Okay, do you have an amount for that, that piece of promotional material that you were talking about, that would be kind of the enduring piece, that we'd be able to use, and even the council could use? How much of that twenty-five thousand is represented by that versus the amount for the trinkets?
So, for us to get just a basic backdrop, I'm gonna pull my numbers real quick. So, for a promotional backdrop, that's just basic, with the design and everything, it could be a roughly ten thousand dollars. And that doesn't include a graphic artist helping us build out our story, and what that means to Glen Arden. That's what we're looking at, and then the promotional items to go along with that, if you want to do banners, if you want to do, like I said, pencils or pens, or just something that they can take away from the table. Those things additionally cost, but we can go through promotional products, or we can go through Oriental Trading Post. You know, there are specific companies that we could utilize to get these particular giveaway items at a cheaper cost. But is that a initial backdrop? We don't, we don't have that. That could cost us that money, and the design too.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Hare?
We already have that. It's in the council's office, we have a nice backdrop, we got a skirt, the skirt that we used on Backpack Data says, City of Glen Arden, it drapes across the table, we got the whole story of Glen Arden already laid out on a phone board, from beginning to end, and that's the way the backdrop was originally set up. With, it actually was a little road that you have, it's like traveling the road, the road history of Glen Arden, and each section they had picture and a story narrative of each picture, where Glen Arden started and where we ended, so it's already been done. And it didn't cost ten thousand dollars. So, it's already there, it's in the council's office, just gotta put it up when you want it up.
Thank you, Councilman Hare. Any other questions from council? Mayacross?
Is it possible that I can get a chance to look at that councilman hearing? I haven't seen this thing you're talking about.
Yeah, I've got to find it and set it up. Because it's a large display.
But. So, we'll table this line item. We can show what we already have. I do think that if we do, at one, I agree with Mayacross of, when I attended MML, it was good to see all the other booths there, telling about the history, I know Glen Arden has a rich history, so it'd be great to get that story out there to other municipalities and people that pass by the booth. I, it's my opinion that this should come out of the administrative budget, as opposed to executive budget, but no, those are, you know, things we can discuss once we lay out all that we have, so we can make a final determination on this, so we'll table community advertisement, promotion, and outreach.
Mr. President, let me just say one thing, because as I was at MML also, and Main Street is something that they do every year, and MML reaches out to each municipality and asks them, are you participating in Main Street? So, I don't know why we didn't get a notification, or if we did get it, where it went to, but they always reach out to every municipality and ask, are you going to be a part of Main Street? So, it isn't like it's something new, I mean, when we did it, we did it three years in a row. And then, when the last mayor came on board, you know, I mean, we didn't get any notifications at all, so I'm not sure where the notifications are going. But, I mean, that's just something you gotta know, now you know, make sure you're ready for it, we can make sure we're ready for it next MML, because they do it every year. So, it isn't something new, so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hare. All right, next up, support equipment. Going from two thousand to ninety-five hundred. Mayacross, if you want a chance to talk about that increase briefly?
Thank you, thank you, sir. So, we do need a new printer in the executive office. The printer that's in there, for whatever reason, we've had T-Spec look at it, it just won't do right. So, we're gonna have to dump that printer, so there's a need for a desk printer there. The executive assistant furniture, if you pull the handle on his desk drawer, it comes in off. So, he really needs some new furniture in the executive office. The executive assistant furniture. Deses, his desk and his hatchback, all of that's old and busted. I mean, it's literally being held together by tape in places.
And so, you just mean the desk?
He needs desks, he needs furniture.
Okay.
Executive level furniture. And now, we have one printer.
Printer desk, and what else? If you just, I'm sorry, I don't, I'll just keep cutting you off. If you just list what's in there, we can talk about the story behind it another time, but if you just list what's in there, and then, I think that'll help us move a little bit faster on this.
So, office furniture and computer equipment, it's listed.
So, you say printer, printer, desk.
And we need a new laptop in our system. So, the, yeah, I don't have a laptop, there's only one.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jones, and then Ms. Ferguson, I'll come to you.
My only question is, with the budgets, I don't, I don't have any issue with them, the things that they're bringing to the budget, but I would prefer that when you come to the budget, if you have some items that you've already priced, so that we can look at the price of what you're trying to spend, instead of saying ninety-five hundred dollars for these different things, computer equipment, executive assistants, I mean, you can look in the, and price these items out and bring them to the cap, to the table, so that we can see what you're looking at, you know, what you're, to get an, not exactly an exact amount, but get an estimate of what you're trying to, what you're trying to purchase. I think that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Oh, okay, as far as the laptop and the printer, I mean, if that's under the executive office, that's fine, but furniture for the executive assistant, if he needs furniture, that's fine, but that needs to go under administration, because he is an employee, unless his budget is under, he's budgeted under the administration, so it should not be under executive. It should be in administration, because he, he is paid, he's under administration.
Budget.
Budget. So, the amount for the furniture, whatever he's gonna get, it needs to be under administration, not executive office.
As of May thirty-first, where are we with the budget? For this line item? How much have we spent through May thirty-first, do you know?
Four hundred and forty-six dollars. I'm sorry, is that support equipment, what are they, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. They spent four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay. Any other?
Yes, Council President, I have a.
Yes, Council President, I, I have a question. I'm wondering, should furniture be under the operating budget or under a capital budget?
I'm sorry. Are you? Are you Mitch?
Sorry, yeah, my, I, I, I got kicked out of the um, my computer, I'm on my phone now.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah. Erica, I mean, Councilwoman Fareed.
I think, thank you. All right, uh, then say that again, please.
Um, should furniture be in this operating budget or should it be part of a capital? Budget.
Uh, it, it would be capital, actually. It's equipment, furniture and equipment.
For some reason, they've always put furniture and for the different departments, they've always put a line item for, for that. And that's saying that it's right or wrong, but I'm just letting you know what past practices.
What is our capitalization policy? What's the threshold for it, Mr. Treasurer?
In the threshold, I have to come back to you on that, but I think the threshold is anything over seven hundred.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Fareed, did you have another question? Let's see your hands, stories.
No.
Okay, Mayor Cross.
So I was looking at the administrative budget. There is a support equipment enlisted. There is office, desk, chairs, bookshelves and filing cabinets at four thousand dollars. So that's line item ten, 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 eighty-three, sixty-one. So if we move uh this line item here out of the executive branch, uh ten fifty, ten eighty-three, sixty, or at least the office furniture portion of it, then we definitely want to take another look at the administrative line, which specifically lists office, desk, chairs, bookshelves and filing cabinets when we do the capital budget realignment.
Okay. All right, and if you get back to us with uh estimates of these things that we need to purchase, that'll be great. And you can give it to Mr. Stewart and have those things included in the proper category. All right.
Yes, sir.
Communications, any questions on communications? Uh, off supply state the same, but any questions? Okay.
I'm sorry. If under office supplies, if, if she's um requesting a, a laptop, would, wouldn't that go under office supplies for this uh for the executive office?
No, that's, I think what we were looking at for office supplies is Mr. Stewart wanted to look at like the cost of printing uh by department as well. Um, for like the regular office papers, pens. If I have to do a proclamation, that special paper and the sleeves and the holders that go with it. So that's all in that line item there, Councilum Jones.
Okay, so I understand that, but what I'm saying is if you're gonna get a new laptop, then you're gonna have to put it somewhere. Uh, unless Mr. Stewart suggests that we create a new line item for uh computer equipment in your, in, in the executive office budget.
Well, that's what support equipment was. So that's what we utilize as a terminology for the support equipment. And I'm looking at others' budgets as well.
Okay, then two thousand dollars is enough in that but line item to cover a laptop. Because I, I, I think in the um.
You, you're talking eighty-three, sixty, ma'am?
Yes, I am, because for support equipment, if you're just getting, uh, you say it's, it says computer equipment, that's what you want to use that line item for and put the laptop in it, then two thousand dollars should be more than enough to uh purchase a, an, a laptop for the executive office. Because as far as office furniture for the executive office, I think we bought uh office furniture for the executive office was bought at least two, three years ago, so that you wouldn't need any office furniture this year. So.
Well, this is for um executive assistant McLong's office. Please stop by and check it.
No, I'm not, I'm not disputing that Mr. McClung may need new office furniture, but his office furniture is gonna go under the budget that he's under, which would be administrative.
Uh, yes, agree, agreed. Well, we talked about putting that under capital budget, actually, ma'am. That's what Councilwoman Fareed was questioning. Should that even be even in the administrative budget if it's dealing with office furniture? Then that deals with the um uh overall city, not what you want. I, I agree with that. A two thousand is fine.
Okay, until that decision is made, then right now, his office furniture will go onto the, the administrative. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. General expenses, uh going for three hundred dollars to six thousand dollars. Any questions? Um, uh, Councilman Ferguson. Yeah, you're on mute.
Sorry, I don't have a question. Uh discretionary funds, I would say six hundred dollars, ten percent of which you put down there. Six thousand dollars is way over the top.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones? You're on mute too.
Uh, I'm sorry. I agree because discretionary funds is, is in, I, I sent a copy of that ordinance to the mayor to let her know what discretionary funds are used for. Uh, I just don't, I, as long, the four years that I've been on the council, I've never seen a discretionary fund anybody even use over the amount that's, that's given. And because of COVID, we took them down to uh three hundred, but it was no more than five hundred dollars, you know. There, there are certain things that discretionary funds are used for and you don't use six thousand dollars for discretionary, for discretionary funds. Polo shirts, uh button-up shirts, frames, engraving, that is not under discretionary fund. That, that shouldn't be under discretionary fund. Registrations, city swag. Annual award events and ceremonies, no. Six hundred.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Mayor Cross.
Yes, thank you. I took that um legislator um report that you gave me for discretionary funds, but I'm also following suit with the legislative budget that was agreed to line item ten thirty, ten seventy-eight, forty on page twelve of twenty-three. Your council discretionary is three hundred per council member, but you put three thousand dollars against that line item for two uh employees. So inside of this also deals with our quarterly and annual award ceremonies for our forty-one employees. So each one of those employees, um, we, we put some money in there to make sure that we reward them for the work that they're doing. Um, so it's bigger than just the other stuff that you highlighted here. The biggest line, the biggest chunk of this money is those quarterly and annual awards ceremonies. We've not done that for uh our people, but I, I do recall the council put three thousand dollars and you just have the one uh clerk. And I think you may have an assistant coming on. And we have forty-one.
That line item is not for, for that. There, there's a line item in the budget which I have to go and search for. It's already set aside for uh, uh, in the HR department, I think it is for um uh employee uh recognition and those types of things.
Can you then help me understand the three thousand that was approved for the clerk?
That wasn't approved for the clerk. That was, I think that was the money when we were, when we had, when we had the summer youth program. That money was designated for uh before and after they came and any awards that we wanted to give them. That's why that money was there. And so now that we no longer have the summer youth pro, that we don't uh have um jurisdiction over the summer youth program that's been given to HR to do, those monies have been sent to her budget to disperse for uh awards and those types of things. And even in the, I think, HR, there's also a line item that talks about um that designated for employee uh recognition and those type things.
If I may draw your attention to the general expense line and the legislative budget, that's what I was concerned.
Uh, point of, point of order. So we're not on the legislative budget. We're on the um executive budget. We just stick here so we can continue to move forward. That'll be great. Um, uh, if you're and, and I know what you're talking about, um, uh, Mayor Cross, but it just defining where things should go, you know, I, I do, I agree that um employees, if you want to reward employees or have ceremonies that, you know, it'd be great to recognize employees for what they do. Uh, that would come out of the uh administrative budget, um, because those forty-one employees are, uh, should, you know, are spread out across um uh, the, the um, the budget. But if it can just separate, what is discretionary fund? Um, and what are you trying to accomplish with different things? If there's a ceremony you want to have, if it's like, cause one thing that I, I do think that we as elected officials need to have is a level of transparency, especially when it comes to taxpaying dollars, um, that, you know, not saying that you're doing this, but but that we don't pad out budgets to spend taxpayer dollars, so that taxpayer dollars go into services that are received. Uh, like, you know, trash and sewer and all that other good stuff, uh, and programs that we provide for the city. So as much as we could um just define what it is that we're trying to do, I think that'll help us go a long way. Um, as it relates to just particularly your discretionary fund, wh- what is it that you would like for your discretionary fund? That's just related to you and your discretion.
Okay, so specifically being able to support local causes and events. Uh, we have the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Clubs, which I have zero money to help them or support them. And they are a nonprofit which is recognized by city council resolution. Uh, as well as the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Track Team. Like, I don't have any budget to support them and their activities, their initiatives through donations or any of that. And, and keep in mind, they don't make money. So this would be an opportunity to support uh our kids as well. Those organizations that are recognized on paper uh attached to the city. Uh, it also would allow me the opportunity to support and recognize the achievement of those community organizations. They give hundreds of, hundreds of hours of their time. And we have not done anything that kind of brings them forward. So if we look at kind of disenfranchisement of our youth and, you know, these are organizations that don't cost much to be a part of, but their acknowledgement and being able to bring them to the forefront so that our community kids know that they do have organizations like the Girl Scouts, like the um Bulldogs uh football team and the cheerleading team, Boys and Girls Clubs, and they do have the track team to participate in. Um, we as a city, I've not seen in this last year us bring those teams out, though I did note in le- legislation that they were pulled out as recognized city um nonprofits that we support. So that's part of the discretionary fund.
Yeah, but what's your plan for it? You know, cause when you think of a budget, you, particularly with um, you know, different activities that you want to focus on in the coming year. It, I, I'm just saying that it'll be helpful if we had a plan and line items for that plan. And we can, you know, you know, put it in here somewhere, but I'll, I'll get, go to Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, I think um the, the purposes that the mayor has outlined are, are worthy purposes, but I do think that they need to be classified as such. My concern with having a discretionary fund that is um, that large is that the purpose of a discretionary fund is just kind of use funds as you see fit, which really should be more for like miscellaneous items, not not supporting programs. Um, so if there are programs that we need to support, um outreach that we want to do, funding that we want to provide to organizations, I think that those should be very specific line items. Um, so I guess, Mayor, my question would be, outside of those types of support things, what do you think your discretionary fund should be? And those are really, again, just like your miscellaneous items.
Well, that's pretty much it, Councilwoman Fareed, what I outlined. Uh, the local causes that, their, their events. Uh, they do a annual conference where they, forgive me, um banquet, where they award the young um participants who did exceedingly well throughout the year. Uh, we can help offset that cost. That banquet usually costs them upwards of about five thousand dollars because they have to buy trophies and plaques for the awards and the kids really do have an amazing time. I did have an opportunity to see uh the Bulldogs football awards banquet as well. So that, that kind of stuff, we can help them with. The parents are literally, you know,
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Cross, but what amount? Okay. Anyone opposed to um six hundred dollars for discretionary fund? Okay. Hearing none. Mr. Stewart, if you can please um you know, take discretionary fund to six hundred dollars, Mayor Cross, if you do have some you know, these events that you want to do, then please present something that has uh dollars associated with it that we can revisit before the budget is passed. Uh, last one is, I'm sorry. Who was that? Miss Stewart, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was saying that it's not.
Okay, thank you. Um, special events is the last one. Any questions? I don't. Were there any, was there a budget for special events last year in the executive budget? Is this correct? There was no budget for special events in the executive budget?
There was no budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, Councilman Ferguson.
I noticed in um the list, the last four um events on were originally under administration. MLK Day, um Memorial Day, Lessons Day and Black History. From that mistake and how did they get there?
Mayor Cross?
So they were not.
I'm sorry, I, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mayor Cross. I'm sorry, I didn't cut, I mean, to cut you off, Ms. Ferguson. Um, were you finished with your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were not under, thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. They were not under the administration. The administration is a support asset. Um, that means if you need your trash picked up, they go pick trash up. If you need um, you know, a tree fail, they pick the tree fail, uh, tree down. That, the special events should not be in that budget like that. And I think we had this discussion on the last meeting, we went over the administrative budget. Their special events is more so like when we do community surveys and that's the cost for sending out the mailers to get feedback because we'd have to put the stamp in there. So citizens don't have to worry about paying for the stamp. It comes with the stamped envelope. So that's something that the administrative budget for feedback and community um response. But when it comes down to the special events, that Black History Month, um, as well as those Harvest Day Rewind, all that's been under the mayor's budget. But it's not ever been a special event. That was part of the problem last year is nothing was coded right in that budget. So it was um, it wasn't. it wasn't listed under special events. I think it was listed, how was it listed last year? Mr. Stewart, and that's, that's part of the problem with the, you know, when we were having these special events, was there wasn't a special events budget line item with mayor. But no, those should not be under the administration.
Well, I know the Harvest Rewind, that was something that Mayor Estes brought to the city. Again, you just said that there was no events, special events in executive, but yet we did have those four events listed in the last administration. And as far as the special events being, that section had, you said, I guess, last, the first budget about the pre-stamped and all that, that's, that is not what, what that, what that category is for. Mailings and surveys and such as that, that's, I mean, that's not, if you want to make a special category for that, that's something different, but that's not what that special events is for.
For example, when you did the PPNE handout, that's a special event. So the PPNE under the administration, because that is something that we did hand out with the codebooks with it as well. So that was information, that's what I'm saying, information, those codebooks weren't printed for free. So that's part of what I'm saying, that, that's paper that goes with, when we do an update of the codes, which I'm praying that we'll get a chance to do this year, then a new book with those updates at least need to go out for the citizens, so they are aware of what the infraction violations are. That is notification that's not currently in the administrative budget. Those are things that I think are special events. And that's because you wouldn't do that all the time. That's a special event, you would do that as a one-off. So for this line item, that's why I put that here in the executive staff. Because yes, the administrative team does support all the special events of the council and the executive staff. Their special events are different, so they are community information and awareness. So like I said, PPNE, when we update the codebook, they, they would send those things out.
Mr. Stewart, did you find where those were listed last, in the last year?
Yes, those were in the administrative budget. It was ten thousand. Budgeted for twenty twenty-two.
Right, and that's what they have been. So in my opinion, they should go back there. I mean, considering you have all my twenty-seven events, I think they should go back there. That's just my opinion.
I'm sorry, Council President, which events were, was Council Ferguson's, Councilwoman Ferguson speaking of
the MLK, Black History, Veterans, and Memorial.
They go back to administration?
That's where they were listed previously.
And the, Mr. Stewart, you said those were under the administration?
Yes, they were under the administration for ten thousand last year.
Yeah, because I always remember Mayor, Mayor Estes doing MLK Day, so.
I mean, he did it. Did, but they were listed.
Under the administration.
Yeah, and maybe-
Because they would have to do the work to get, to do whatever it is that he wanted to get done.
You know, did it with the city manager on, when we had, had city managers out. We just need to decide, I mean, I'm just saying that we just can't just take stuff out of somebody's budget and put it into theirs. Now, if it's, if it's okay, then that's fine, but it needed to be mentioned.
And, and Harvest Day?
Oh, yeah, the Harvest Day was created by the mayor, that was Mayor Estes, that was something he brought to the city, and that definitely would be under the mayor's budget.
Okay. Mr. President, actually, the Harvest Day was actually brought by former mayor Gil Parker Carter, and it actually was under administration. He used to call it Harvest Day.
Okay.
The mayor just, Mr. Estes picked it up and called it Harvest Day, because it was past Halloween when he did it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Cross?
Okay, so I was just asking for some clarity. As it pertains to Martin Luther King Day and Black History. Now, as you stated, Councilwoman Jones, the administration will do the setting up of, if we utilize the tables, the chairs, and the tents. But they are not planning anything. They are workers to help these events happen. That's why the planning, the execution, the procurement of if we're going to use vendors, all of that is usually done by, like I said, the executive staff or the legislative staff. The administrative staff is a support element to ensure that if you need special things, tables, tents, chairs, that they are there. But that, they should not have that stuff under their budget. Respectfully, request that their budget is reserved for communication of changes where the whole populace has to be informed, which is, for example, best example, the codebook. When it's updated so that citizens aren't getting fines and they don't know, or they haven't been exposed to the changes, the administration is responsible for those notifications. When COVID hit, the administration was responsible to help the elected body ensure the safety of the people because they would be impacting the police staff, impacting the public works staff. So the special for the administration would be things that impact their people in the streets particularly. So respectfully, that's what I would ask that we look at the administration for.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, under the administration, under the administration budget is saying community-wide events and citizens' feedback forms, but that citizens' feedback forms was inserted in this new budget, but community-wide events and the specific events were listed in the prior budgets, so. I mean, as a part-time mayor, I don't see how you're going to be able to, to, to prepare for any of these events. You would have to use the administrative office to, to do these things, so. Why not they be there? I mean, you would have input, but it wouldn't be like to bring all of the entities together to have this event go off and be successful. You would need the administration to help as they've done in the past.
Actually, all of these events happened this past year, and they were quite successful. During the, particularly the Martin Luther King Day Parade event happened right there on the grounds, but it was during COVID, so the building was shut and we were not allowed to be, to open the building for the event. So we launched that event on the grounds of the municipal center, it was quite successful. So there are events that the executive staff does, doesn't require the utilization of our administrative staff. Even to set up tables or chairs because of the partnerships that we've made across this county with other support assets that have those things. So that's why, not necessarily true, that statement, and, and they, it's not really required to go under them. I, I really request that we reserve their line items, not for these things, they are an asset to support us if requested. And we should be making requests to the administrative staff, which should be put in to their work schedule in coordination with the city manager. But these events, everyone of them happened, and we didn't use the administrative staff. Other than for the Thanksgiving.
Because that parade that was given on Martin Luther King was another event by another, by another organization that you got into. So that's why that parade happened the way it did. That was not a Glen Arden sponsored event parade that was done by, I think, another organization, not think, but I know, when I pull it, I can pull it up on Facebook, that that was done by another organization.
No, that was Mayor Cross stopping. The Glen Arden actually got a major shout-out, Channel Nine News for that one. So Glen Arden did do that parade. It may not have been in the traditional fashion that you're used to seeing, but you can pull the news report, Glen Arden received that phrase, but I appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Are we keeping this line item the same at twenty-eight thousand dollars? Anyone opposed to keeping this at twenty-eight thousand dollars?
I'm opposed to it.
Mr. Harry?
I think the money needs to be in administration, because administration is going to have to do it, but I guess my thing is, if, if it's a city-sponsored event, it need to be a city-sponsored event. If you're going to do a city-sponsored event and partner with other people, that's something different. That's another issue in and of itself for me. Because I need to know, when we're partnering with people, what are they getting in return for their partners? You know, so that's an issue with me in the town. I can figure that out. I would rather have it be under administration where it needs to run through, and I can know what's what. Also, these five thousand dollar scholarships and everything else, I mean, I don't understand, there's no criteria, how do we know, you know? You just have to pick your favorite person, you know? I don't, I don't know, I don't know what's going on with most of the stuff. So I think it needs to be under administration, it needs to run through administration. They are going to have to do most of the work for most of these events. For Martin Luther King Day, for Harvest Day, for MLK Day, I saw a lot of citizens, I mean, a lot of employees out there helping from administrative assistant all the way down to public works, all the way down to some council members who was working. You know, so it needs to be in administration.
Councilman Jones?
And then some of these other events that's under STEM program, what, what does the STEM program do? The senior and youth outreach programs, what, what pro- there's, is, is there a criteria set up for these programs? Mental health and wellness programs? What is the criteria? What, what, what part of taxpayers' dollars are we using for these events? Parade and farmers market, I mean, what, what's the criteria? What are we doing here? Walk for Cancer, bike-a-thons, I mean, I understand that all of these events are not, but what, what, how does it, how is it going to affect, we're using tax, they, we're using taxpayers' dollars to have these events, but, and how are they going to benefit? How are the, how are citizens going to benefit from these, these programs? I think that we should have some kind of criteria as to know what they actually are going to do. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So how much are we moving to the administrative budget? So we can have, so Mr. Stewart could be clear of what he's doing.
How much did they spend on Black History Day and then Memorial Day and Harvest Day last year? What was their budget? Where are their budgets at? What, what, what they spent so that we will know how much to put in a budget to, for these events to happen again? I know the Veterans Memorial and Memorial Day, we just have an event where the, a program with elected leaders and the, sometimes the, well, not sometime, this year for the two, we've had the two seventy-five persons come over and do something, but there was no, there was no any refreshments or anything like that served, it was just a program. And they gave out the, they have the little poppies that they give out, but and the speakers that come, they volunteer their time, we don't pay for speakers, so why would it cost, what, five thousand dollars? To have any, a Veterans Memorial event or a Memorial Day event?
Mr. President, I mean, I did want to bring that up too, because we have an MOU with two seventy-five American Legion, and they basically, all we provide is the tables, the chairs and the tents. And they usually do the program. So it's no cost to the city except for the manpower that we need to set up chairs and tents. And that's about it. So not sure what type of program we're looking at for five thousand dollars, but we've never, the most cost we usually have was sending our postcards, which was seven hundred and ninety dollars or something like that. That's about it. That's how, that's how part of it.
So with that, any recommendations of the amount that we're moving to the administration? What stays and what goes to administration? Or what gets cut?
You know, special events. Was nine thousand and, and, I'm sorry, in FY nineteen, it was nine thousand dollars that was spent, and I'm looking for, oh, here it is. In the administration, how much was spent for its special events so far?
Special event had eight thousand and thirty dollars so far through me.
That's how much they've spent? Or, okay, eight thousand and thirty dollars, so.
And, yeah, and we can add a couple thousand dollars to that, because I think the the senior, whatever that, I forgot what it was called, but the event that was held in Nutrisystem that went under the police budget, that's not included in that number. And I think that was about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so in the administration, special events already has a budget of, they're requesting a budget of an additional five thousand dollars, which would give them ten. So do we add an additional ten to that? Which is?
Yes, special events.
Ten, 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 eighty-six, forty-seven. Community-wide events and citizens' feedback forms.
Okay.
Council President?
One second, I just want to get ahead to a number. So we're saying that we're moving ten thousand dollars from executive budget to special events in the administrative budget? So what you're saying, Ms. Jones?
Yeah, that was my thought.
And so that'll leave Mayor Cross with eighteen thousand dollars in her.
I'm not sure, I would want to leave eighteen thousand dollars in there, because like I said, she has, there's no criteria and no identification as to where this, how, how this money is going to be spent on these other events. And, and, and being honest, looking back at the events that, that she's already hosted, we haven't seen a budget, or there's always an issue, so. I, I just think that we, we need to get a criteria as to what she plans on doing with the eighteen thousand dollars, you just can't spend tax dollars, you know? Just money just doesn't grow on trees or fall out of the sky. You know, we need to be able to identify what we're spending this money on.
Okay. Mayor Cross?
Respectfully, you just put ten thousand dollars in the administrative budget, they didn't do any of the events last year. We serviced seventeen hundred citizens, and we also gave out five hundred pounds of food, three hundred pounds of clothing. And the truth is, the administration didn't support any of these events as far as planning. The only thing they did was whenever was allowed by the council, they would set up tables and chairs and tents. But for the most part, they did not have any of that in the last year. So the number that you see, when it comes down to each one of these, if you look at my Excel that I tried to share with you, I broke down the expenditures and I shared that with the treasurer, and it is disappointing that he didn't include that when he sent the report to you, so you would have a clear understanding of what each event costs. So each one of those events were ran, led by the executive office mayor. The administrative staff, I'm told, was prevented from supporting by the council. So you do have several events in here that I would like to share this Excel with you, and they are all broken down by their expense.
I have a question related to one thing you said, Mayor Cross, you said you gave out five hundred pounds of stuff, and weren't all those things weren't all those things donated?
They were donated, but in order to set up the facility to have waters, to have drinks, those things are not things that were free. So while they were under the administrative budget because the executive line did not have a budget, then the administrative budget is where we pulled it from, but the administration did none of that work. So that's what I highlight. You put the budget over there, they don't do the work. So I think it's an illogical appropriation to put it under the administrative budget. Maybe it's a measure of control by the council, but it's not logical. They don't do that work. Nor do they do the planning.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. I've got Councilman Fareed and then Ms. Ferguson.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm actually less concerned about whether it goes under the administrative budget or the executive budget. I'm more concerned about the amount. And keeping in mind that we voted to not increase the tax rate and that we needed to have savings. We need to cut the budget in order to kind of address that one hundred and ten thousand dollars that we would be losing by not raising the rate. So I would say that this amount would just needs to come down, whether it's in the administrative budget or the executive budget. And, and it sounds like the comments that are being received from some of the more seasoned council members is that some of these items may not need as much money there as possible. So I would suggest we at least cut this in half. Or maybe just make it even like fifteen thousand for events, supporting these events. And I don't know if, if Councilman Herring or Jones or Ferguson have any, if you think that's still too much, but I mean, I think we, we are going to have events. That's part of, you know, what we do, but I do think that amount is high.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes, I do agree that that money is, I mean, that, that amount is high. And I also wanna comment on the comment that the mayor said. I don't know where she got her information from, but the council did not prohibit the administration to participate. I would, I'd be more prone to say that that in, in, in a lot of your activities, no one knew what you were doing. So in the future, if you get such a comment like that, I would request that you ask the, the council. Because we are not here to bring separation discord. That, that is and I, and I hate that you even mentioned that in public. We did not, citizens, we did not do that.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, and, and I also saw something on there and that special events budget for public safety awareness. To me, that sounds like a police, uh, community event function that they would be the ones to do that. So a public safety awareness information under, under the executive office, that should be, I think, under the police department for them to do anything that doesn't, has anything to do with public safety and awareness to the citizens. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, any other members who are close to this section out? So I, I agree that, you know, we do need to find savings. So anybody disagree with cutting it in the first step? Anybody disagree with cutting it in half to fourteen thousand dollars? Okay, so fourteen thousand dollars. Now the next step.
You didn't go no lower than fourteen?
Oh, we, we can. I mean, if you.
Let me tell you honestly, I'm gonna tell you honestly, not raising the tax rate and spending money like that during a recessionary period, fourteen thousand, I mean, you cannot have every event you wanna have. You cannot, you gotta pick and choose what you wanna have. I mean, the council picks like four, four events, that's what we do. You know, expiation, Christmas party, some other events that we may have, uh, healthy, healthy eating and, and something else. You cannot have every event that you wanna have. You cannot have twenty seven events. The city is not, this city, Glenon is not built for that. I mean, when Mr. Stewart showed us the budget, of course, he said, every penny that we bring in, we've spent. We, we have a, a profit of five hundred dollars. That's not gonna get us any safety. So we got to, we got to be very frugal because Benon has one of the lowest tax rates. We didn't raise taxes, so we gotta be very frugal with our money. You cannot have every event that you wanna have. You gotta pick and choose. I mean, it's like a Christmas time. What's your favorite toy? You get your favorite toy and you get apples and nuts for everything else. You know, so I mean, that's what it is. I mean, you can't. I think fourteen thousand is too high. I think that it needs to come down even lower than that. I mean, I mean, and my thing is it's going into administration, you know, where to get this, this money in administration for some of these events. And like I say, some of the events are just, I mean, you cannot keep on having lavish events. It's just not, it's just not cost effective for the citizens. So that's my feeling on it.
Thank you. Was there a number you had, Mr. Harry?
I mean, I'm, I'm like, I mean, personally, I don't see why a special events is needed in the mayor's budget when you got it in administration. She's gonna run it, she's gonna run her programs through administration, already in administration. The staff is there, her support staff is there. So I'm not understanding why we need one in events. I mean, I mean, I mean, and, and I don't know why we need any events in adminis, in, in executive. I'm not. I just don't see it. I just, I think we need to keep it focused in one place, cuz I, I can see money being pulled from two places to do things. Now, we ran into our issues just before with the police budget and administration budget to do out the last event. And we got it, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go through that again. You know, it needs to be in the budgets. I mean, even I don't know. I just don't think it should be, honestly, me personally, don't think it should be in two places. When the city gonna do their events, they need to do it in one place. And I think it should just be in administration.
And so the amount?
What did they have in administration? I think they were saying what, fifteen thousand, something like that?
Somebody had to tell me, cuz even this.
With the transfer of the ten thousand, it will be fifteen thousand in administration.
For special events?
For special events, yes.
I'm sorry, it's fifteen thousand now?
It is on fifteen thousand with the transfer from the executive to the administration.
And I'm sorry, what did you transfer?
The ten thousand.
Okay, oh, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Councilman Herring, so with your suggestion that it be in one place, so we did move over those, I think, five events. So are you saying move the other events or some of the other events that the mayor has in mind, move them over there as well?
No, I'm saying that if there's fifteen thousand dollars in it, do with what you can and be done.
But that would include some of the ones that she still wanted that was outside of the standard ones? I mean.
Um, I don't know what you're gonna do with them. I mean, maybe they can, she can list whatever she can do with fifteen thousand dollars. And, and, and strike out the one under exec, executive, executive office. So it'll just be fifteen thousand dollars flat for some community events. I mean, I'd, I'd even go up to twenty thousand for special events and then just pick and choose which ones you can do with that money. But to have it in two places, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think you'll be pulling money from here and then you know, we've had to be tracking all of that. And I don't think it's a wise decision.
Okay. All right, so we have a number out there. Twenty thousand dollars especially that. Anybody disagree?
This is in the administration?
In the administration. So I'm, I'll come to Ms. Ferguson in a second. So it'll be to close out special events in executive budget, move all of it into one place to the administrative budget. It's currently in administrative budget, five thousand, increase it to the total of twenty thousand and have it there and have them plan out the different events that they want throughout the year.
I think we should keep the, 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 the five events that we've, we know we've always had, MLK Day, Veterans Memorial, Memorial Day, the Harvest Budget and Black History event. I think those should stay, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, those five should continue. Even, I mean, even though they have the twenty thousand to do whatever they want to, to have special events. But, you know, and so it, it, with this special events, it's gonna include the mailing, the postcards and everything that they need to do within this twenty thousand dollar budget.
Wouldn't that be at the discretion of the mayor and the city manager?
All right, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, the, the legacy events that we've always had, I, I wanted to keep those, but I mean, if they don't wanna have something for the Veterans Day or Memorial Day, then that's.
The mayor might have a, you know, a, a better idea of how, you know, you know, an event that will benefit the, the city, but you know.
I, I think that, I do think it needs to be, something needs to be listed in this budget for those events, cuz I mean, you, you can spend twenty thousand dollars on one.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so I think you need to list something in there to say what we actually are gonna pay for with that money. What's events, uh, that she preferred to have. I mean, it does need to be listed in there.
And like I said, the twenty thousand dollars is gonna include the mailings and every, every, you know, whatever they need for that event, they need to plan for. Okay, we, we're gonna have Veterans Day, we're gonna mail out to the citizens and let them know. So that, that money would be used from there also. Am I correct?
Yeah, everything would come from Monday. It should flow through there.
Okay.
Yeah, the Memorial Day, that's almost like a standard. I mean, it's like Councilman Herring was saying that we have an agreement with the American Legion. So I mean, I would not think that that would be omitted. That would be there. But so again, just for clarity, it was originally five thousand dollars in special events for administration. And so we're now, we're taking fifteen thousand from the twenty eight thousand?
Yeah.
And putting it like twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anyone disagree?
There is still thirteen thousand left in special events.
We're gonna squash that. I think Councilwoman, Councilwoman Guillaume has her hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Councilwoman Guillaume.
It's okay. We do have a special line item for legislation, this legislative part, right? For special events, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Right? So and the only reason, the only reason why I'm asking that is it kind of goes with the comment that I made last week, which is if we are saying that the administrative function is going to have, you know, whether it's twenty thousand or whatever number we end on, I just personally feel that we should cautious, we should be cautious at not dictating what these events should be because let's say they have the twenty thousand and they say, well, I know we always do veterans, but we, we're choosing to do, I'm doing a fake, I'm making up a fake holiday here, but not even fake. Let's, we, we wanna do something for Juneteenth instead, right? I, I just want us to similar to what Councilwoman Fareed said, I, I am paying attention to the numbers. Right? The budget is the budget. And if it's twenty thousand dollars and they decided they wanna do X, Y, and Z with the twenty thousand dollars, that's that's going to benefit the citizens of Glen Arden, great. I just don't want us to waste too much, well, sorry, not waste, I'm sorry, to take up too much time focusing on what the events are going to be for the administrative office. If they decide to do something differently, once this, this budget is enacted, then we come right back and say, oh, you said you were going to do this event and you're doing that event. You know, I, again, the numbers to me is what's more important. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Historically, a while back, Glenon you said it's one of the best MLK Day events and I go and to be tried to, you know, they tried to revive that by a lot in the budget for it. That's why we always have it in the budget because we're trying to get back to what we used to do. And Memorial Day and Veterans Day is a must for us, with our MOU with the American Legion. So those, those are, those are musts. I can understand what you're saying, you know, maybe you might not have something, so you may wanna transfer it and do something else. You know, I understand that. And I'm, I'm not a stickler to holding to it. You know, unless it's an event that, that, that supports it. But some of those events have, I mean, you don't wanna put them on and give them us, we'll put them on, you know? I mean, we already, we already mounted the postcards for Veterans Day and Memorial Day anyway. You know, cuz that's all we do, you know?
Right. And, and I agree with you, Councilman Herring. I do believe that these holidays are very important, especially for, you know, personally for me as well. I just don't want later on down the road, you know, if, if, if something important comes up and we're like, nope, you can't use that because it's only supposed to go towards this. And I could see how it could get a little murky. But I do agree, I do, I hope that those events continue, especially for MLK and Veterans Day, Memorial, et cetera. But I just wanted to make sure that we don't, we, we don't become sticklers to, you know, if there's extra money left aside and we're like, nope, you didn't budget for that. I'm sorry, nope, you didn't mention that in the budget. But if there's money left aside, they should be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. Citizens, I just want you to be aware that in the legislative budget, there is fifty-two thousand dollars apportioned for special events. What I am concerned with is the legislature's body, the council is not allowing the executive branch to have any special events money while they hold fifty-two thousand. The executive staff, the administration does not plan events. The administration supports events. They should not have that budget line. That's why, Council President, we had a discussion when you first took office where you told me, make sure all of our events for FY twenty-three get put in the executive budget line item. And you have been provided this Excel. Now, our apologies that the treasurer did not afford it, but each one of those events have been broken out and their significance by the month, which is why we did the budget this way. I just wanna highlight fifty-two thousand dollars is under your legislative budget for special events. So my recommendation, if you're pulling it out of the executive budget, it comes out of the legislative budget and it all goes to administration. No one carries a special events budget as an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cross.
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah. I think that every event that we've had in this, in the council's budget, we did. We, we've held them, we did the backpack, we did expungement, we did. Only one we didn't do was Christmas party cuz we ran out, we didn't have enough time, you know, in Hill City, which we had to get back on. But these are just standard events that we've always had. These are events that pop up all of, all of a sudden at the last minute. You know, these are well thought out events that we know is gonna help, help the citizens in our community. And we make people aware of what we're doing. And we notify people of what's going on, you know? So fifty-two thousand dollars, Glenon Day, Glenon Day takes the biggest chunk of that. And you went to Alaska on day, you need to paint sip, you know? So I mean, you saw where your tax dollars were going. So I mean, to compare one to the other, I mean, I think our budget has been at that level almost, well, for the last four years, I think, for every year. We, I don't think we've even increased that budget for our community outreach. And, and a lot of times, we don't even, we don't spend all the money, you know? So you know, we don't sit there and look for something else to do because we know we got these line item events that we wanna do and we try to focus on that. And we also are wary about how much money is being spent of, of the taxpayer. You know, so it isn't about who's having the biggest party. It's about what, how much bang for the buck that you can get out of it, you know? So I mean, it, I mean, so I don't think you should focus on the legislative office. You should just focus on what you got for the administration and see what you can work with there.
Councilman Herring.
Point of a water?
Mayor Cross, if, if you wish to be heard, just, you know, ask the president officer, which is me, if you'd like to speak, and then I'll call on you and then you can speak. Miss, Mr. Harry, I'm sorry, you can continue.
I'm finished, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Uh, I'm looking at the budget and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars was spent on the FY nineteen actual expenditures for the city, for the legislative budget. The next year was only thirty-six thousand. The next year it was twenty-one, twenty-one thousand. This year, I don't know, I think the Glen Arden Day, or if, well, like Mr. Herring said, that takes a bulk of it. Right now, I think he said we're like at maybe nineteen for that. So that fifty-two thousand, you're looking at saying that the, the council, the legislative office has fifty, is fifty-two thousand dollars in their budget for special events. That's what was spent on FY nineteen. FY nineteen, we were coming out of COVID almost and what they spent the money on, I'm sure that they can provide budgets for it. And that's what it was spent for. There's no fifty-two thousand dollars in the budget for legislative special events this year, citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council members? So, I think we're, overall, we're still at the same point of, um, having special events for twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that those events, I'm just phrasing, those events will be coming out of administration. Anyone disagrees with that before we move on? Okay, Mayor Cross, before we go to the public safety.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Council President. Uh, again, what did we come up with? So, does the executive staff have an, a special events at all? Or is it all moved over to them? Uh, again, citizens, I totally want you to know that there hasn't been a special events budget line for the mayor ever. And that's one of the problems, but the mayor has been expected to do certain things, as you said, Harvest Day rewind, bought on by, um, you know, Mayor Estes and previous. So, there needs to be a special events budget line item for the mayor. The city administration does not host or launch events. That's for the, uh, mayor and the legislative staff. Legislative staff, you've got fifty two thousand, because you've always had your own budget and always approved the budget. But the mayor's special events, I don't know what happened in previous budgets, but I am requesting, and I have broken out every event, and you have seen many of them transpired. And whether the council came or not, we have had seventeen hundred visitors, citizens, to these events. They did provide value to our community, they did get us on the news recognition three times this past year. And as I stated, we took it out of Hyde, and we had a lot of supporters, but we are a rich city. We should be taking care of our people. And that's why this special events budget is put in here by the mayor so that we can take care of our people. And events like mental health and wellness programs, putting those on, the senior banquet, putting that on, that was an amazing event, and it wasn't free. So, the special events needs to be in the mayor's budget line. I requested twenty eight thousand, keep in mind, there's fifty two thousand in the legislative line. You've never had a mayor that asked for this in a special events budget line.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. I will ask that, um, no, before we move on, because I mean, we've been two and a half hours on this budget, um. As we move forward, and hopefully move forward together, working together, that these events that you did have, uh, unfortunately, you know, I wasn't aware of some of them, and some of them made aware of at the last minute, which is why there weren't too many council members there, because there were just things added at the last minute. So, if you could communicate, uh, the events that you do have, that'll be great, because we want to participate and give back to our community as well. Um, and also, I, I do commend you on the, um, you know, five hundred giveaways, seventeen hundred, you know, items you would give away, whatever that number is. I will say that, uh, in, commend you for doing a great job of being able to, you know, have donations to give to people. That doesn't cost anything, and I encourage you to, um, continue to, uh, get outside, uh, sponsors to help our citizens, uh, which is, is, is great. Um, but hopefully we can move forward together, uh, and everyone can know about all the events that are going in the city that could benefit the citizens of Glen Arden. Um, alright, Ms. Reed, I'll give you the last comment before we go to the public safety.
Thank you, I just wanted to know if there's a reason why we don't just have one special events, um, budget. I, I don't, I, I, I feel like we're getting into a back and forth about whether you go to administration or executive, and in hindsight, I think the fifty two thousand for legislative is high as well. And we might want to revisit that, but i- it just seems like there should just be one special events budget that is, you know, events that the city of Glen Arden is putting on, meaning the council and the mayor. Um, you know, together, I know the police department has their own special events, and that's for a particular, you know, reason for a, a community outreach, but as far as the council and mayor are concerned, I'm just not sure why we need to have separated events.
Yeah, and I think to that point, uh, um, I think us as elected officials getting together, have a strategic plan of what we want to do for the coming year. Um, every year or for the next three years will be helpful, uh, in having the, a one special, um, event thing, so we can work together to solve, you know, those events, but, you know, we could talk about that in the coming year of how we want to restructure that, if, if that's the will of the council, um. You know, I digress, and we can move forward, but that's a good point, Councilwoman Reed. Alright. Two and a half hours, we are done with the executive budget.
I got, I need clarification, so we moved the ten thousand over into the administration's special events. The special events line in the executive office is not, is, is no more?
Uh, correct, no one s- s- you know, said anything about it, so, where we left off is that, for clarity, uh, we're moving of the twenty eight thousand dollars that's in the executive budget, we're moving fifteen thousand dollars of it into the, um, administrative budget. So that special events total for the executive and administrative offices is twenty thousand dollars. And in there, uh, Mayor Cross will have her discretion of what events, you know, the administration wants to to put on for the fiscal year twenty three. Um, so fifteen, so the balance of thirteen thousand dollars is being completely wiped out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stewart, do you have that?
That is so, that is so, just zero.
Thank you. Alright. Sorry. Onto the public safety budget.
One of the water, Mr. President, what time is this meeting going to end? Are we supposed to be ending at nine thirty?
Uh, we're just working through the budget, and if we get to a good stop, we could just go stop. Um, we can tackle this last budget and stop if we like.
No, I was just gonna say, because if we're gonna end early, I mean, we gotta hit some of the smaller ones, that's not much to. Go ahead, we, we can go wherever we want to go. I'm half sleeping there, so if you don't hear from me, I'm probably asleep, but go ahead.
Yeah, because public safety is kind of, kind of long, because you got salaries and what they do, so what about the Veterans Memorial or?
But we, I mean, we're gonna have to hit this, I mean, i- I agree that we got this at a just, you know, uh, very late. Um, but we have, we literally have a lot of stuff to do. I, I, I can't, I don't think I can save us one way or another from a, a long meeting. Um, I, I mean, I don't, I honestly don't think this is going to be too much to go through. Um, because nothing, not much has, uh, I think the total changes is a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, if I'm reading this correctly. Um, and we could hit the areas that, you know, it changed, if that will speed it up. Alright.
Excuse me, Council President. Yes, I need to sign off. Good night.
Alright. Okay, we'll just get through this last public safety, and then we can adjourn. I mean, th- there's literally, I mean, I, I don't have too many questions on here. But if you do have questions on here, we all have the budget ahead of time, let's just tackle those questions. Does anyone have any concerns or questions as it relates to the public safety budget?
I have a question, I gotta find the, uh, what I'm looking at.
Okay. Well, Ms. Jones is looking through. I'll keep it at the salaries if anybody wants to. My, um, uh, Councilman, for Councilwoman Ferguson.
I have a concern about the amount of, uh, increase in the overtime.
That's what I was looking for, thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Okay, here's the overtime right here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I mean, I remember I got, uh, requesting information, uh, uh, this time last year, and, um, the most that we spent in overtime was, um, last year, within a four to six month period, twenty two thousand dollars, prior to that was like, um, the, uh, o- outside of that, the most we did was nineteen thousand and some, and that was for a whole year. The other ones was eight thousand, twelve thousand, and fourteen thousand, for a whole year of overtime. And, um, twenty two thousand roughly was spent in less than a year. Um, and I, I don't know what it was spent on, so, um, the average, I would say, the highest amount spent in one year was nineteen thousand. So, um, I mean, even if we increase it a little bit, I think forty five thousand is, is our ages.
Chief Brian?
I agree, I agree, um, with, um, Vice President Ferguson in reference to that. I was looking at it, I, I, I think it's ways that I can cut down that, because I also see areas where I can use that money, for example, um, take away from the overtime. Um, in light of all the recent shootings, um, we just purchased, uh, two, uh, long guns, AR fifteen, and training for that. I just had two guys, um, that's gonna go to training for that, and that's five thousand dollars, because they have to have a long arms training, this, um, instructor, um, range time, and ammunition for that. Um, that was five thousand dollars from my two guys that I'm getting trained with the two new AR fifteens. So, um, yeah, I totally agree that I could take, we can bring that, um, overtime budget down. Um, to nineteen thousand, or whatever you guys deem necessary for that. But it's always good to have that overtime in reserve in case you do have a situation like, um, another active shooting area where we have to, um, utilize overtime, so, but I do agree. Thank you.
At, um, twenty, twenty thousand, um.
I agree with it.
Minimum, you know, I mean, that, you know, so beyond that, but it's been at, uh, at a, at twenty thousand, I mean, no more than twenty five, eh, eh, um, between twenty, twenty five, but definitely not a, not a twenty five thousand dollar increase.
Right, that's cool.
Um, Councilman Jones, I saw your hand go up and down, do you have a question, uh, comment?
Uh, because they've answered pretty much the questions, and, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson presented, um, the issue that I was had with the police, with the public safety budget. Uh, also, um, I, and we were supposed to get a report, weren't we? As far as what that overtime money was spent on, Councilwoman Ferguson, did we ever receive that to, uh, identify what they spent that, um, um, money in in three months of?
No, I, no, we have not, no. I can't even imagine.
Yeah, so, and I'm wondering what, what our police, uh, uh, do for overtime, because, um, that would be, I, I would like to see that report, but it would be nice to know, because with overtime, uh, we don't, I, I, I've never known, uh, there's only one stakeout that I've known of, that I've been, that I'm aware of, that the, the police have, uh, uh, that had, but, um, and, um, I mean, what is it they do for, on, on overtime? What, what, where do we use overtime at? Because even when we have, uh, homicides in our city, the PG County, uh, Police Department picks those up, so we don't, uh, we're not, uh, really involved in that other in the, other than the investigative part, I'm sh- I'm, I'm thinking. So.
Well, uh, let me speak on that, um, I can check and find out, I wasn't here at the time, but I can most definitely look into that and see what's going on, but I'm talking about moving forward for the future. Um, I can get, I can go back to the past, and we can talk about the past, what happened in the past, but I'm here now. And like I said earlier, I thought it was a little high, and, uh, we can bring it down, but, uh, like Vice President Ferguson said, we most definitely gonna need money in overtime budget, because anything can happen, so I don't want to be a situation where we're not prepared for it. Um, but I totally agree, um, I look at those numbers too, it's kind of high, so, if we can bring it down, if y'all agree on the twenty or whatever, but I'm most left, definitely, uh, like to see those reports too, and I'll look into that tomorrow and get that information out to you guys.
Okay, anyone opposed to just bring it down to twenty five thousand dollars? I think Ms. Ferguson said twenty to twenty five.
I'm fine with twenty five.
Okay. Alright. Um, Stewart, please bring that down to twenty five thousand. Moving on. In this area of the budget, uh, you know, any questions?
Yeah, Council President.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Cross, did you have any questions related to public safety?
Yes, I do. Budget line item ten fifty five fifty eighty six forty seven. Even the police has a special events. Y'all, I just asked for transparency from the city council and fairness. If the city council has fifty two thousand, there is not any executive branch, the administration does not plan executive branch events, you know that. And you have parades, community outreach, there isn't even the bottom line explanation that I put in the executive line, but you have seventeen thousand five hundred proposed for the chief's budget. I'm just asking for transparency and fairness from the city council. There is, and there has been, no administrative support in the last year, so special events, Council President, you told me to make sure that gets in the FY twenty three budget, it has. And you did not take a consensus, you took the voice of three of your seven present council members. I just highlight for the citizens that there is definitely an unfair treatment here from your executive budget line item. Where every other budgeted line item has a special events from the post, public safety, legislative, even the administration has some, but the administration does not have the capacity to do what the executive branch, Mayor Cross, did over the last year. And to ask me to continue to utilize NGOs and nonprofits to do my work for this city, I think it's an inappropriate ask, particularly when you're holding fifty two thousand in the legislative budget. Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mayor Cross, um, thank you for that, um, and I did tell you that, you know, the ideas that you have, you know, put it in the budget. I, I, I view that twenty thousand dollars as, at you and the city manager's discretion of events that you want to have, it's twenty thousand dollars. Yeah, you can make up the events, if you are creative and want to do something different, if you want to, you know, you know, make MLK Day bigger, or, you know, do a, see your citizens event, or whatever have you. You have twenty thousand dollars to do it, I think the, you know, whether it's in the executive budget, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Cross, one of order. Um, whether it's in the executive budget or the administrative budget, you spent money this year and it all came out of administrative budget, so, I mean, I, 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 I support the events that you want to have. You know, there's, there's no hiding it, I, if you have ideas, you're mayor, you want to have them, fine, you have twenty thousand dollars, you know? Budget, well. Um, Councilwoman Jones, Councilwoman Jones.
Those, uh, uh, the, those events that the, the police department has, they, uh, uh, account for, account for their events every year. Night Out on Crime, uh, tr- uh, the, um, they had a trunk or treat, we saw that for, for the citizens, that was for the citizens. Night Out on Crime is for citizens, they also have another event that I can't, it's right on, took my tongue.
For the badge, and then we have a new one.
Yeah.
Other daughter event that's coming up.
Right, and they account, those events, uh, we can, uh, uh, get notice of them, and we are a- as a council invited to them. Some of the events that, uh, that were put on, uh, by the executive office, we had no knowledge of what was going on, no, uh, uh, flyer until the last minute. Uh, and you just can't spend money for events that you don't have a criteria for. uh, flyer until the last minute, uh, and you just can't spend money for events that you don't have a criteria for. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, Council, Ms. Ferguson?
I do believe that, um, they've also participated in, um, drive by, um, for some, I, I call them, uh, super seniors, the ones that are up at age ninety and hundred, uh, for their birthdays. Um, there's a community, um, thing as well. I don't know what they can say yet, but they have done it to, um, a few of our, um, uh, I think, like a hundred years old, ninety, and the, the, I call them super seniors. So they, they do that as well.
Okay, and I'll say the final comment on this, so we just don't track this meeting on and on and on about special events. Uh, the fifty-two thousand dollars that's in the legislative event, it goes to Glendarden, about thirty-something thousand dollars that goes to Glendarden Day. Um, it, to me frankly, it doesn't, and I'm not advocating one way or another, it doesn't matter if Glendarden Day is in legislative or administrative, but I do recognize the importance of Glendarden Day because it's historic, it's always been in the city. Um, I, this predates me as a council member, you know, it's been with the council. Uh, so I support the events cuz it benefits the citizens, it's an opportunity for all of us to get out there and come together, uh, whether it's in the legislative budget, executive budget, administrative budget, um, but that's always been there, it's there now, so that special events is fifty-two thousand dollars because most of that is for the historic Glendarden Day that has been, that's, it's supposed to be held every year. Uh, but with that, we'll go back to, um, the public safety budget. Any other questions here?
I have a couple of comments, uh, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, thank you very much. And looking at this budget here, um, I think that we, for conference and training, uh, as I mentioned earlier with the training, um, we're gonna have to get AR fifteen training, um, I see some other things, well, I need some supervisor training for my own sergeants and a lieutenant, a couple of training, uh, classes for them in, uh, uniforms. So some of the money I took away from the overtime, I wonder if it was possible to be transferred to a conference and trainings. Um, I'm very particular and very serious about training, especially my supervisors, um. I do have some training for the officers coming up, um, not that much training. Uh, I do have some, uh, connections with DC where I have some free training. I just had two officers attend some, uh, crisis intervention training in DC, which it didn't cost us anything. Um, but I'd like to up these two areas, um, with conference and training and with, um, uniforms. I saw one of my officers, um, came into the office the other day, uh, pants kind of worn and one of the problems we do have is the turnover, um, since I've been here, we had two officers, um, that left and, um, we spent all money on uniforms and stuff, and I think both these officers are here, one, well, one officer was here for a year, and the other one, he would be leaving after, um, I think about ten years of service next month, so, um, the turnover and, you know, we can't transfer uniforms and stuff, so I just wanna make sure, um, I just wanted to mention that and see how that works out.
Is there an amount that you had in mind?
Uh. For uniforms? Dean, maybe you can help me out with this. I'm, I'm seeing the red over here, um. Are we proposing twenty, twenty-one thousand for uniforms? Is that what we have right now? For fiscal year twenty-three?
Uniforms is twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars for twenty, twenty-three.
Right, so if, um, if we can add five thousand to that and five thousand to my conference and training, I think that'd help us out tremendously.
Any opposition? Councilwoman Gill?
No, I just wanted to ask the question, Dean, so, so we're saying that we're already increasing the uniforms by eleven thousand, and you would like to, for it to be increased by sixteen thousand? Is that what you're saying, Chief?
Okay, maybe I'm looking at it wrong. So we, we increased it by eleven thousand?
Yes, cuz it's, it's, yes, cuz prior years, I see ten five four eight for the prior year, the year before that, ten five four eight, and then before that, it was, you know, even lower numbers, but if I'm looking at ten five four eight for the prior year, and then we're saying this year, we would like to increase it by twenty-one five forty, that's eleven thousand dollar increase. So you want it to be increased by more than eleven thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so if, if we can, um, increase it from eleven thousand to sixteen thousand, uh, that'd be great on that end, and then with training, um, I think the training was at thirteen, is that conference?
Fourteen, four hundred.
Okay. Well, yeah, if we, if we get an additional five, like I said earlier, to each one of those, um, to the training and to the uniforms, I think that will suffice.
Mr. President, ma'am?
Councilman Harry?
Yes, okay. So Chief, right now, you got twenty-one thousand dollars in the budget for uniforms. You want it to be twenty-seven thousand?
It, it's, let's see.
You got twenty-one thousand right now and it's showing in this, in this, in here for uniforms.
Okay, so, let's see. So that's like, I got twenty-one people in it, well, twenty people, so that's a thousand per person. Yeah, yeah, that, that's a thousand person, so we, we can leave that at that. We can leave that at twenty-one, I got you now, I see you. But eleven, okay, so the red in eleven thousand, excuse me, people, this is my first time doing the, the budget thing, so, um, bear with me. So, so we got twenty-one thousand for the uniforms, so, okay, for conference and training, that's at fourteen, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so because of the AR fifteen training, um, if we can increase that from fourteen, if we can.
To nineteen.
Huh?
You want five thousand dollars more for that?
Right, yes, sir.
You should make it twenty thousand.
Yeah, twenty. Okay.
All right, any opposition to the, so as it stands now, the uniforms will remain the same, uh, but for conference and training, we'll increase that from fourteen thousand to twenty thousand? Anything you wanna oppose to that? All right.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Jones?
Under support equipment, uh, ten fifty-five fifty eighty-three sixty, you're, they're putting twenty-one thou- you're gonna, uh, buy two tasers and two body cameras and that's gonna cost twenty-one thousand dollars. Is that how much that stuff costs?
Um, repeat the question, ma'am?
Support equipment, for police support equipment, two tasers, two body cameras, twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Is any, um, detail on this coun- uh, council, um, Senator Stewart, for?
I'm fine there, um, how much they gonna spend?
For this line, can you see my screen, um? Uh, Chief Bryant?
Oh, oh, second, let's go there, okay, sure, sure. Okay, I got your screen now.
All right, so, uh, she's referencing this line right here, uh, police support equipment, two tasers, two body cameras, in the budgets for twenty-one thousand dollars, and she's asking if that is for the two tasers, the two body cameras, that's that total twenty-one thousand dollars?
Um. I don't know the exact price on it, but I know, I know the tasers cost and I know the body cameras, so I don't know if it cost that much, but, um, I don't know where they got the number two from, cuz, um, we gonna need more than two, so I don't know where they got two from on there, um. But I can't.
We just bought tasers last year though, from what I understand, and they got, um, I know the body cam, um, contract to keep them, uh, running, they just did that, but didn't they, I think they bought, uh?
Yeah, we just, uh, we just upgraded the tasers to, uh, X-sevens, uh, we just got those cases in, uh, last month. We had to upgrade them, uh, to a, to a updated version, and, uh, they did some training on it and they had to retrain on them. Um, so we got two new officers coming in, um, but they got two taser on here, two body cameras. I know, I know they cost, I think the number might be wrong when that is falls to and to, but, um.
Yes, yes, that, that is correct. The two, it's not two, it's really for, um, not only the purchase of the, the cameras, it's also the subscription, you have to pay that every month.
Right, right.
On those, so that's what it's really made.
Okay.
I mean, so more than two, so almost all the officers were trying to get using tasers and body cameras.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have two, you have, okay, they're all.
No, 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 the two, um, that was, uh, uh, arrow.
Yeah, so I, I know, I know it'd be more too, okay.
Okay, so on, under eighty-three sixty, the next line item up, the, um, ASPS or pepper spray, vehicle law books, crime digest, and we're at fifty-four two thou- fifty-four two hundred sixty dollars. Public safety equipment, including tasers, taser payment. We're back to tasers again, okay. Cuz you have, uh, you have taser payment here and then tasers, two tasers down there, so I don't, I'm not clear on, uh, the designation that's given in this line item, but it's fifty-four two sixty, and when I look at support equipment eighty-three sixty, I'm sure this is for all four of these line, all of the one, two, three, four lines of eighty-three sixty, it says you've spent forty-six thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. So, I guess the fifty-four. Okay, I don't have a problem with that, okay.
As we scroll down, any other questions? For the public safety budget? Okay, all right, so with, I'm sorry.
That's it, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, thank you, Chief. Uh, so with that, the only changes we're making to this budget is we are decreasing, uh, Mr. Stewart, decreasing overtime, uh, to, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
As the budget for that, uh, and we're increasing, uh, tra- conference trainings, uh, from fourteen thousand to twenty thousand.
Right.
Ms. Ferguson, did you have any?
The Explorer program, four thousand, this funded by Speaker is. Are we still have, do we still have that program?
Or I'm wondering, looking to pick it back up?
Chief Bryant, are we looking to pick back up the Explorers program?
Um, no, we're not gonna pick up the Explorers program because with the issue with the Explorer program, the Explorer program target middle school students that's gonna go to high school, and we used to have elementary schools in, uh, city of Glendarden, so we can't target the elementary kids, um, with that program, so it's ineffective for the city of Glendarden.
Okay.
So should that be removed?
Where is that at on there?
It's not.
It's, it's, it's four thousand dollars in the budget for the Explorer program, so if we're not gonna have it, we can just take it out.
I agree, Council President.
Yeah, take it out. I don't have a problem with it. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, all right. Do you have all those changes, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I do.
Oh, wait, 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 hold up, hold up, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Communications is thirty-two thousand dollars? Uh, oh, that must include their communications as far as, uh, uh, the, with those, whatever the police use, is, is that what I'm seeing this money for? It says telephone expense and, and Verizon, Verizon wireless. So, uh, communications is, is that for all of their, like, equipment in the car and everything?
Body worn cameras, cell phones, everything.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, with that, um, so I'm gonna lie down. Anyone opposed to keep on going, or do you wanna stop?
I have to go.
Okay. All right, so at least the, the major hurdles we've overcome. Um, I think there's still some outstanding items from executive budget that the mayor's gonna get some details on and bring it back. Um, it looks like the, uh, public safety budget is done, uh, so that would put us at uh, puts us at the, uh, the smaller ones plus the goat room and capital projects. Oh, well, American Rescue Plan. All right, um, so availability for Tuesday. Everyone available to pick this back up on Tuesday, July the fifth? Mister uh, Aaron, are you available Tuesday?